This is after much discussion. This is the Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. This virtual meeting is being held in, sorry, is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Both adequate and electronic notice of this virtual meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hundredan County Democrat and Courier News newspapers. On or about January 21st, 2021. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building located at 38 Park Avenue. And any handicap accessible instances there too, posted on the municipal website. Provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons, if any requesting copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must remain at all times. I'll ask if we could please rise for the flag salute. Eileen, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Driver?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Mr. Dasha?
Here.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Budney?
Here.
Mr. Hane?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Norton?
Here.
Mr. Levitt? I do not see on the screen. Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Mr. Clerico?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
Mr. Troutman?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the bump in the back and the bump in the back and the bump in the back. Apparently, some other board was mistakenly trying to use the Borough Zoom account and kept canceling our meeting on us. So I want to thank everybody for their indulgence in us getting started a few minutes later than normal. I believe, Mayor, that we've resolved the problem.
I believe so.
Okay, so.
Sending an email to be sure.
Okay.
I'm looking down.
I will say, if for some unknown reason, this happens yet again, my apologies. And I will ask that everyone, please, we will stop the proceedings and everyone, please, to get back on Zoom. And we will not return to the meeting until I see that not only are the board and professionals back, but I'm going to kind of keep an eye on how many attendees are in public. And I'll try to make sure that everyone else is back as well. Obviously, the meetings are recorded, but I want to make sure that no one gets their access cut off because of a technical problem. So before we proceed with the agenda items, Cara, do you have, do you want to do our conflicts? Is there anything to go through?
Yep, I just wanted to ask with regard to any new matters on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the board have any direct or indirect, personal or pecuniary interest in any of these matters? Or is there any other reason why they feel that they cannot be unbiased with regard to their review and determination of such matter? Sounds good.
Great, thank you. I will ask, item number one on the agenda, as always, is a period for public comments. Four items not in front of the board on the agenda this evening. Eileen, did we receive anything by email or voicemail? Or hard copy, for that matter?
No, nothing was received.
Okay. Members of the public who wish to speak for a period of up to three minutes each, please use the raise hand function, which is in the Zoom interface. If you're dialing in, that would be a star nine. I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. Thank you all. We'll move to item number two on the agenda, comments from the mayor.
Good evening. Thanks. Nice to see everybody. Cara loves the new haircut.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things with the governor's revised new executive orders. Removing social distancing and room capacity limits. The Borough will be moving towards meeting in person again for council and presumably all boards and commissions. We do have a reopening committee, a meeting this week to talk about some of the technical issues that we'll have to deal with. Because obviously, we want to try, I'm hoping that we can keep some kind of hybrid thing going on. And obviously, we also want to keep the technology that we're using for electronic submission of documents. So Jeff will be a part of that meeting and we'll get back to you. I don't know if it will affect your June 8th meeting, but it will definitely impact the one after that. And we'll be talking about that and get back to everybody how that's all going to work. The other thing at the next council meeting on June 14th, I will be introducing for first reading an updated ordinance regarding parking minimums in the downtown business district for non-residential, non-office uses only. And so you'll see that coming up probably to in front of the planning board at the second meeting in June. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeremy Long, council comments.
Um, no, I didn't have anything other than just to reiterate what the mayor had said. We are having a reopening meeting. I am one of the council members there with Kim Tilly and our Office of Emergency Management Officer McNally. I'm looking forward to that, and I'm sure a lot of us are, getting back to the physical realm and seeing how we're gonna, we're gonna do that. So we'll, we'll update all on those logistics when we get them, and that was it.
Thank you. HPC, we did have one resolution that was distributed to everybody by email. I'm looking at the attendees. I'm not seeing the chair of the HPC out here. I don't think there's anything that we need to discuss HPC. Otherwise, I think we're good. Okay, item five on the agenda is approval of minutes from the May 11th, 2021 regular meeting. Kind of get a, I know that by email, there was one correction that Mayor Driver submitted about a vote. And Eileen, did you, you saw that? Okay. Are there other, can I get a motion on to?
So move Cook.
In a second.
Second, Hane.
Okay, any other clarifications, comments, or corrections for the minutes? Okay, Eileen, please call the roll.
Mayor Driver?
Yes, Dave.
Mr. Long?
I will vote yes for what I was here for.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item six on the agenda is resolution connected to application. I don't think it's 2021-03, I think it's 2019-03, if I'm remembering correctly. 70 Church Street Spice Factory LLC, Block 39, Lot 3, which is an extension of site plan approvals. Cara, we have the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I did not have a chance to get this over to Eileen. I will have that for the June 8th meeting. Obviously, it's really just a perfunctory administrative resolution. It's extended because the current state of emergency is still in effect, as is the Permanent Extension Act or the extension of the Permanent Extension Act. So there is no effect by not doing this tonight, but however, I will have that just for our record keeping purposes.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move past that item on the agenda. And Eileen, we'll just put, make sure that that shows up for the next meeting and we'll have that formal adoption of the resolution. Item seven on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for application 2020-03. Lee B. Roth, Block 21, Lot 2591 Main Street, continued from February 23rd, March 9th, 23rd, April 13th, 27th, and May 11th, 2021. Cara, before we begin, I'm going to turn it over to you for a moment.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there's been a question raised by the applicant with regard to the attorney that's representing the objector. We did receive notification that the objector next door at 95 Main Street has hired counsel and that they wish, they wish to participate going forward. Applicant's counsel has contacted me and with a concern that the counsel for the objector is within the same firm as a commissioner of the county. And the county, as we know, owns property directly adjacent to the property that is the subject of the application. Just to make it clear, the objector is not the county. The member of the attorney of the commissioner's firm is not representing the county. However, the question's been raised. So we have a couple of options tonight, and I do see that the applicant's counsel is here as well as objectors' counsel. I have not had an extensive opportunity to take a look at this issue. From what I've looked at preliminarily, I have an idea as to whether or not there's a conflict. But again, since this came up late as a question, what I would like to do is to get thoughts from both counsel for the applicant as well as counsel for the objector as to their thoughts on whether or not there is such a conflict. So that is what I'm going to recommend to the board that we do. In light of that recommendation, we can proceed one of two ways tonight. We can either hold the entire application until the June 8th meeting and proceed with everything at that point after I've received the commentary from both counsel and made a determination. Or we can have the applicant proceed with whatever testimony it was intending to do this evening and hold any questions of the witnesses by the objectors' counsel until the June 8th meeting, at which point the applicant's witnesses, everyone that appears tonight, would have to appear on the 8th as well. So that once we do rectify this potential issue, the objectors' counsel has the opportunity to question those witnesses as well as present their own presentation with regard to the application. So those are our options tonight. We do, Mr. Chairman, I believe, again, have counsel for both the applicant and the objector here. If we'd like to hear from them with regard to both of those options, but that's what I have to recommend to the board.
So what I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to promote to the panelists. So.
Checking out.
Yeah, so Mayor Driver, Mr. Long are going to duck out because of the conflict that they have on this application. But I would ask them if we could get them back in if we proceed to other items on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing on the next matter as well as a devariance, just to note.
So then, no, no worry about it. Okay, never mind. I'm going to promote to the panel the applicant, who is also the applicant's attorney, as well as the objectors' counsel, so that we could have a little bit of a conversation here. I see Mr. Roth is here. I, I'm assuming that we've got counsel there, okay.
I'm here. Can you hear me? This is John Lanza.
Yeah, Mr. Lanza, we can absolutely hear you, yes.
I don't know why my picture's not up. Something just happened to my screen and changed, but I can see my name, but I don't see my, my face.
Okay, we know you're here and we know you're not a cat, so we're okay. So I'm gonna, you know, there's two ways to proceed. And, and I know that this kind of, this issue was raised relatively recently in the day, you know, it was and I want to give our council time to adequately research the question. So, Mr. Roth, I, you know, in my mind, as Cara laid out, there's two ways to proceed. And it may be easier for us to just carry everything forward to the June 8th meeting so that your witnesses don't have to come back twice. But, but I'm gonna ask if, if, what you, what your thoughts are here.
Well, the only reason I raised the issue, Mr. Chairman, is because a number of years ago, Erica Edwards was employed as a lawyer in my firm. And when she sought to be a member of the planning board and then mayor of Flemington, I got a letter from the council representing Flemington saying that I had some choices. I could fire her or I could not participate in any planning or zoning meetings or any municipal court meetings if I allowed her to continue.
I know, but before we get to, I don't want to, I don't want to argue the merits of.
I'm not arguing the merits.
No, no, no.
Basic facts.
No, no. What I'm saying is, we've got two ways to proceed. Either we want to, you want to call your witnesses tonight and then bring them back for the objectors' attorney, once we resolve this before the next meeting, or we can just carry everything forward. That's really the question that I want us to, to stick to. Because I don't want to get too far down the road of, of the merits or not of the objection. Because I, we don't know yet what, what, what the conflict may or may not be.
Well, I want to proceed with our witnesses tonight. The, what we have to present tonight are, the board has asked for some additional information from our architect. He is presumably, I don't, I don't get to see who's logged in or in the crowd out there as I would if we were in the meeting room. But Doug Shotlin should be there, and he has a short participation to basically answer questions and show the additional work he was asked by the board to accomplish. And he will talk about that. Wayne Ingram, who's our engineer, the same way. I would then follow with Art Bernard, who is a planner and is new. He has not been sworn. He is simply here to address the COA issues. And then I would go to Tom Sterns, who's our planner, who never had a chance to deal with questions because we were running out of time.
Right, well.
That's my plan.
Well, and to be honest, we, I, we can't go in that, we cannot go in that order. We have to go to questions for Mr. Sterns first because his testimony was kind of interrupted. So we need to have questions from our professionals, questions from the board, and questions from the public on his testimony. And then you can bring other witnesses in because we're still in the middle of his testimony.
Well, you're in control of the meeting if he has to go first. Okay, I just, because the other two were short and had open questions.
I understand that, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna interrupt his testimony to bring in new witnesses at this point, so.
Well, they're not new witnesses. They are people who, the first two, the architect and engineer, fully testified. They're only back because you asked for additional information from each of them. They have presented that information. It's on your website. It's been distributed, and they're here to address simply that, nothing.
No, I, and I, and I understand that, but, but because we now have been notified of a formal objector, the objector has the right to cross-examine new testimony. So anything from this point forward, the objector has the right to ask questions of. So even if Mr. Ingram and Mr. Shotlin have relatively short testimony, the objector has the right now to cross-examine those witnesses as well. And that's why they're gonna have to come back next meeting regardless.
That's fine.
Okay. Mr. Lanza?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I entered this case formally with a letter and on notice to Mr. Roth 10 days ago, maybe as far as two weeks ago. And I just found out about this issue five minutes ago. And I would, I would have been prepared at least to have responded with some authority if I had known sooner. I did discuss this somewhat with my, my son, who's my partner and is the commissioner, is a county commissioner. The county has taken no position on this matter. And he assured me that if perchance it came up at one of their meetings, he would recuse himself from participation. But that's as far as I got as far as doing any, any formal research. But had I been notified, I would have.
Fair enough. I understand. And to be, to be, and for the members of the public and members of the board, I got this about a half hour before the meeting start time with Cara called me. So this is not, we're all, we're all on relatively short notice here. Well, if Mr. Roth would like to proceed, I mean, and you understand that any witness that is called tonight, will, the objector has the right to do further cross-examining on any testimony given further, then we can certainly proceed with the continuation of the public hearing. But Cara, you're gonna reach out to both councils?
Yes, I will, because what I would like is something from both council with regard to their opinion on the issue. And I'd like to have that presumably if we're going to proceed with this on June 8th. I mean, the sooner the better, but I'll give you a timeline of no later than June 1st, if that works for everybody.
That works. I can say with some authority that this issue popped up before, but that was because John, my son, was a prosecutor in the municipality in which I was appearing before the board. And I can say for sure that there's case law on that, and there was no conflict. Maybe a little bit different now because of the property owned by the county. However, again, the county's taken no position, but I would have to research that.
And, Mr. Lanza, I do appreciate that. I found that exact same ethics opinion. It seems pretty clear with regard to a commissioner's representation of a municipality, of a prosecutor, municipal prosecution, defense, or even of a land use board. But this is a little bit more complex, so I think it would behoove everybody just to take a little step, take a look at it, make sure that we don't have any potential appealable issue, and then we can go from there.
Understood.
Okay, so, Mr. Lanza, thank you so much. I'm going to remove you as a panelist at this point. And we'll see you, I guess, at the next, at the next meeting.
I understand that if it is determined that there's no conflict, that the questioning would be limited to what's presented tonight.
Correct.
Not what they did two and three meetings ago.
Correct.
We don't want to do the whole application over again.
I know, they, you're, you're absolutely correct. And for members of the board, just so you, especially, we've got a couple of newer folks. The objector is, because we got notice of that objection subsequent to our last meeting, the only material that is subject to that cross-examination is anything from that point forward, right? If we'd heard, if we'd gotten notice of an objector at the beginning of the app, of the hearing process, certainly, all the other prior testimony would have been fair game, but, but Mr. Roth is correct. So only on the testimony given from this point forward. And then obviously, they do have the right to present, you know, make their own case, as Cara had laid out, and call their own witness if so, if they so desire. So with that, we're, we are going to proceed with the public hearing. And I'm going to promote to panelist, Mr. Sterns, the planner. And where we are, where we are in terms of the flow of the testimony is, we are up to, according to my notes, we are up to Beth McManus's review letter. And I'm going to turn it over to Beth to proceed.
My, my notes from the last hearing also indicate opportunity for questions directed toward Mr. Sterns.
That's exactly where we're at.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
So unless you prefer otherwise, I'm gonna start with just a few questions. And then I can run through, if you'd like me to pause and then do the memo later, I'll leave that up to you.
No, I, I think if you do your questions and then you do the memo, and then we'll go to the rest of our professionals and then the members of the board, that's fine.
Okay, that's, that's just fine then. So during the last hearing, Mr. Sterns went through the, the devariances for, for the D1 variance for residential uses on the first floor and also D1 variance for the parking structures that are proposed, the parking carousels, if you will. And so typical for, for any experience, I think what the board needs to consider here is whether or not this particular property is, is particularly suited for, for those proposed uses. And importantly, whether this property, as opposed to other properties within the DB district, meet that site suitability or particular suitability characteristics set forth in the municipal land use law. Mr. Sterns also addressed the C2 variances, including parking, impervious cover, rear yard. And so the board needs to consider how these standards are used to address the permitted intensity of development and, and whether or not the, the various variants, rather, criteria can be met, given the various characteristics of the proposed development. So just a, just a little overview, but I want to remind folks that we did hear planning testimony on those D and C variances at the last hearing. I do have a couple of questions for, for Mr. Sterns. And at one point, I think there was a reference to senior housing during the testimony. And I'm sorry, I, I think I thought of the last hearing, I would remember exactly when that was stated. But of course, now I'm, I'm racking my brain. But could we just get some confirmation that we're looking at family housing here on the site?
Well, I think the point I was making was, I was talking about accessible housing, the first floor units, that there were, there, what I've been told is that there's a market for first floor accessible housing for, for seniors, that it isn't, quote, senior housing, I'll say, accessible housing for, for older folks, or.
Okay, so senior friendly housing opposed to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was, I, you know, in terms of the parking variance, is some of the, some of the information, the testimony supporting it is about other available parking elsewhere in the borough. And so there was some discussion about how residents can park on adjacent county and municipal lots. And I wanted to get a little bit of additional information about that specifically. If there are any other parking locations cited, like those county or municipal lots that are available for overnight parking, or if those are only available for daytime use parking.
My understanding is the county lot just to the south on Main Street is supposedly not available for overnight parking. But I believe the lot that's over behind park, behind courthouse, that big parking lot for a courthouse, I think that's available for overnight parking. But I'm not 100% sure, and probably Lee, Lee knows, knows the answer. You're muted, Lee.
Well, we know based on studies that the municipality has made that there are 850 public parking spaces in the borough. I don't know which ones are limited and prohibited from parking, but people who may need, for some reason, parking beyond what's available to them on our site and their parking on our site will be controlled by leases. They will have to on their own find other places to park, as anybody would. I have had, when the property was fully occupied, people who occupied this property, we only had, as a business, these computers go crazy. We only had the four or five spaces on our property. And when there were as many as six or eight people working on the second floor in the back building, they found parking wherever they found it. We didn't provide it or designate it to them, and their leases specifically provided that they could not park on site and they'd have to park, park, find parking, and they all did. Now, these people were not staying overnight, but, and I know that the borough, when there's snow situations, direct people to park in these parking lots. But it will be up to the tenants who live here, as it would to any people. We, I've had one or two occasions when the people rented the upper floor, oh, probably 10 years ago. They would have eight or nine people work around the clock to meet some of the deadlines they had because they were working for pharmaceutical people. And they would have people up there, they, they would park wherever they could park. They found the parking spaces.
So my concern though is, I appreciate that there is available parking in the borough. And one of the things that we hear around town is, is not so much that the borough is underparked, but rather, we have a wayfinding problem in town. So I appreciate that, but, but it's a little bit different when we are talking about residential housing and folks that need parking overnight as opposed to for a few hours while they do shopping or, or dinner in, in the downtown. And I wanted to raise this concern because I believe that the, that the county parking lot. And I wanted to raise this concern because I believe that the, that the county parking lot, which is perhaps the closest off-site parking area, the county lot being the one behind the courthouse, is available for, I don't believe that's available for overnight parking. I think there's public parking available on the weekends, and I think folks are able to take spaces during, during office hours. But I'm not sure it's available as a, is what might be considered like a permanent parking location for a resident of the property.
Well, I don't think we're looking at it as permanent spaces for residents because we, we think for the number of units we have, we have enough parking on site.
Right, so you're, so you have, I think, 13 parking spaces, whereas, whereas 19 are required. So we've got about.
That's a made up number that you require, but we only have.
Well, I think it's RSIS rather than, rather than my own calculation. I'm pretty sure that's the state standard for how to calculate parking across all New Jersey municipalities.
Well, and it's in the process of changing, as you know. In fact, there's a major conference tomorrow that the State Bar Association is sponsoring relating to parking. And.
Do they have an alternative parking standard that's being proposed that you're proposing to me?
I'm not proposing to you an alternative space. I know it's been proposed to the borough, to both the planning board and the governing body, any number of times, that there be a change in the ordinance in order to live up to the word friendly to business kind of motto of the bid. But, and I think the reaction always was, well, don't worry about it, we won't change it. We easily give variances when they're needed. Well, that didn't solve the need to not have to go through the variance process. But rather than just asking for a variance and staying with the four parking spaces, we're making available nine or more extra spaces at considerable expense to be able to accommodate the people who we anticipate will be living in this project and making use of this property. We would not, we don't have any nearly enough parking for the square footage of office that we have now. So we're considering, providing considerable improvement in relation to the requirements with this parking structure, with the two-car stacker and with taking down a little bit of the back building that's frankly relatively useless.
So I just want to, I, so one thing, I want to be clear, we're not talking about providing extra parking. And the parking that's being proposed and, you know, by virtue of the fact that there's a variance for the outstanding parking, it's required pursuant to state and also borough code. So I just want to be clear about that for, for the planning board members. So what we've got here, folks, is the applicant is proposing 13, where 13 parking spaces, where 19 parking spaces are required by the borough ordinance. We've heard some testimony suggesting that 13 is adequate. And, you know, the borough regularly considers parking, parking relief for applications. But I just want to be clear that I, I'm not certain that there's available off, off-site parking for overnight. Certainly, there's available off-site parking for daytime. And folks would be able to park on the street overnight if that's what's necessary. But, but I think that may, that may indeed be necessary as we move forward. But, but that said, I do want to reserve or defer any, any other comments on the parking demand to perhaps Jay, if he wants to provide some comments on that. But in terms of the planning, the planning relief, the applicant does indeed need relief for parking for those, for those six spaces. And then, of course, there's, there's the use variance associated with the parking structure, but that's, that's certainly a bit different. So those are my only two questions that I had for, for Mr. Sterns. On the, on the testimony, as I said before, he went through all the variances at the last hearing. I do have some other questions and comments that I want to make on affordable housing. But I do know that Mr. Roth has another witness that's going to address that topic. So I'm going to hold all comments on that until, until later. In my report, I do have a number of comments and questions. And I think that all of these have been addressed by the various witnesses during the course of this hearing, during the various meetings. I do, in here, have also something that I wanted to highlight. There's a lot of land use policy in my report, beginning on, at the bottom of page nine, that addresses this application. And quite honestly, we heard a lot of that from, from Mr. Sterns as he reviewed his, provided the planning testimony on the various variances. But I thought it might be worth just reiterating a little bit and highlighting some of what it talks about. So we have a variety of borough-wide goals that I think are relevant to this application. Talking about, I'm looking at the top of page 10 for this, about preserving, protecting, enhancing the integrity of Flemington's historic district and employing strategies to encourage community and economic developments, strengthening the commercial sector of the borough. And we also have the last two, which talks about using density, mix of uses, public open space to enhance the downtown. And the last one being to provide opportunities for appropriately scaled and located residential development to encourage redevelopment, revitalization of underutilized properties generally. And so I think there's a lot of policy here that, that supports adding density to the downtown, adding people to Flemington to help support the commercial sector, to support Main Street. I think that's very clear, one of the overarching themes in our reexamination report. But the, I think what the board also needs to consider is, are there particular impacts on, from this particular application, whether we're talking about parking or architecture? But, but really, does this, does this application as a whole fit properly on the particular site? And that should be weighed against our master plan policies. So with that, that's a, that's a very brief summary of my reports since, since we've heard testimony on so many of the comments and questions I, I made. But I'm happy to, to answer any questions that the board may have.
Well, I'm going to reserve that for when we have our board discussion. A little bit, you know, further down when we get into that point in the hearing. At this point, I want to, let me go to Jay Troutman, if there are additional, because we, because Beth, you raised the question about parking to Mr. Sterns. Let me go to Jay next.
Thank you. Mr. Sterns, do you have any understanding of how the parking is going to be managed by lease, as Mr. Roth had stated would be the case?
No, that's a short answer.
Okay, I'd like to hear an answer to that question somewhere. You know, I was just thinking about parking management on this site. It would be, it would be good if, you know, each space was somehow assigned, maybe with a few extra, to limit the number of cars that go back and forth in and out of there instead of just having everybody going back there and taking a chance that they're going to find an open spot. I also raised the concern with overnight parking in my memo. I think the distinction with this application is the fact that it creates overnight parking demand. I'm not sure, I know where that demand's going to be handled. The reality of suburban New Jersey is each unit can, can create two cars. So I could easily see there being 18 cars thrown off by these nine units. And I would just need a clearer understanding of where those extra cars are going to end up each night in the downtown. So that's really my main, my main questions. I don't know if they're going to be answered right now, but I would raise them since the subject came up.
Well, I can, I can say in response, at least in part, that we have controlled in leases with the business people who've had offices in relation to the four spaces that we have. We also, in the discussions with people, and I've learned this talking to other respected people who lease residential space in and around town, that they inquire, how many cars do you have? What do you need? And they'll assign a space, or they will have people pay extra in order to get a space or to get more than one space. And a lot of the experience from people that I've talked to is there aren't that many cars in some of these residential situations, especially the smaller units that have, people looking for those units are often people who have just one car. So you can't assume that there's going to be two cars for every unit. 15 years of experience at 123 Main, which I've represented since we got initially a 37 parking space variance when they redid that building. They have eight units, they have 10 spaces, and they've had no, no problem with their people dealing with their cars.
Jay, did you have any other questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, Bob, was there anything that you needed to address with the planner, Mr. Sterns?
No, I didn't have any questions on this planning testimony.
Okay, I'm going to go now to members of the board with, of Kara, go ahead.
Yeah, just really quick, Lee, I might have missed the answer, but will the parking spaces be reserved for the units or not, or you're not sure at this point?
No, there will be spaces reserved for units.
Okay, and they will be marked accordingly?
Well, they'll be numbered and you will have access to the space that you've made arrangements to park in. Nobody else will park in your space.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Kara?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, members of the board with questions on the planner's testimony. Susan?
My question is for Beth. Am I allowed to ask a question of her at this?
I would actually wait to ask Beth questions until we have our discussion because what will need to happen is we'll need to swear in our professionals and have them testify, and we'll ask them questions, unless it's like a clarifying question.
I don't know, I just wanted to know what the ordinance was for garbage surrounds, which is usually a planning issue.
Screening of garbage facilities?
Yeah, for multifamily units in our borough.
I can, I can find, I don't recall off the top of my head, but if you give me just one minute, I can answer the question, I think.
But we are. I will, in response to that, say we're fully screened because there are four walls. We're, we're a court rail back there. We're not exposed to the street in any of the places where the garbage cans will be located.
But you're exposed to the parking lot, right?
We're exposed to our own.
Yeah, and I think there was testimony that down the driveway, I think evident in the architect's rendering that were shown, the view down the driveway depicted the three or however many trashcans.
You might be able to see them, which is not a lot different than seeing some kind of fence or barrier that gets in the way.
I guess I want to know what our ordinance calls for, and that certainly can be answered at a later time.
All right, did you have any other questions for the planner, Beth, Susan?
No.
Okay, any other members of the board? Jim, go ahead.
Actually, I think this one's for Lee. Lee mentioned that there would be numbered spaces for anybody that was renting in the units.
Well, people who are renting units may have a space provided to them. And I don't know whether we'll put their names on them or a number on them. Usually I've seen it just done with numbers.
I would, my question would be in the rotating unit where cars go up and down in a circle, how can you number them? The empty one is at the bottom all the time.
Well, there, that's limited access and the keypad, I'm informed, handles that. You can, in a way, I'll put it this way, I don't know a better way, you can dial up your slot. And that's available unless you're on the unit.
Okay, the way, the way the use of the system was noted was the fact that there was always an empty one at the bottom.
The empty one goes to the bottom.
Give me a minute. You're saying now that if you have a keypad there and there's supposed to be a number three and that's at the top, you can hit the button and number three will come down empty.
That's how I understand it works.
And where does the one, where does the one empty one at the bottom go to?
Somewhere else in the unit, that's all.
Okay.
So there will still be always one that's empty, correct?
No, there. You can, you can fill all of them, they can be assigned. But what you can do is call down to the bottom your space because you push in number three and your slot comes down and you can drive into it.
Maybe just as a suggestion, the way that you would number the parking spaces that are surface parking, one through whatever, parking spaces, let's say, three through six or three through nine would be in the carousel and then appropriately designated in the lease to each applicable unit.
Well, they'll, they'll be numbered in some way and designated. I haven't thought through exactly how we're going to do that.
Jim, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just concerned that if the empty one's always at the bottom, and I realize the fact that probably 80% of the times, the entire nine spaces won't be filled. I was just worried that the person stuck with going in the bottom, but apparently what he is giving us for information is that he can dial in his number three. That will come down and be the empty space for them to drive in and then they can park.
Yeah, and there are only eight in there, by the way. I think you may have said nine.
I stuck an extra one in there for you.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Todd.
So my question is for Mr. Sterns. On your justification of the D1 for the parking carousel, you talked about less demand of parking than the office. But I, I'm a little confused because I heard some irrelevant testimony about what goes on today for an office, where people can park. So am I to make this decision on a parking variance that the answer on where you can park is park wherever you can? That's all, that's it? I don't know where folks could park overnight that's even near this facility. So with, without that answer, I'm having a tough time understanding where, should there be an extra spot or an extra need to park a car? I heard lots of testimony on, on what we do from a business perspective, how it's less demand. But I still have not heard testimony on where, where do you park overnight? I, I don't know. So are we closing that where there is no place to park overnight on the record and you park wherever you can? Is that the final answer?
No, I don't think that's the answer. You, you might have to walk two blocks. You might walk to the Art Color Parking Lot, I call it. It's the, often referred to as the courthouse parking lot. That's about the farthest one. You might make arrangements anywhere with any private property owners to park your extra car if you have more than a car.
Thank you. Thank you. No further questions for me.
The members of the board. Susan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at my notes from last week, and I do have one other question for Mr. Sterns. Mr. Sterns, last week you said, and I'm quoting, the, the site has a lot to offer but needs more density to work. And I agree with that statement. My question is, when you were consulting for Mr. Roth and Mr. Shatlin to, you know, prepare this application, did you advise them at all? Okay, well, you know, you have, you're proposing nine units. 10 won't, you know, 10 is too many, but eight won't work. Did, did, did you go through that process with them? And if so, how did you come up with the number nine as the sweet spot for how to make the density work? And I'm, and again, we can't as a board determine the viability of this project from a financial situation. That burden is not something that we can consider when we're voting. But I do need to understand where the design came from and where the number nine units came from. Originally, it was 10 when it was originally submitted. And I'm just wondering where, where that came from. And, and if you advised them on any funding sources such as the. and if you advised them on any funding sources such as the Net Zero Department of Energy Building America Program, or the Enterprise Green Buildings Program, or the New Jersey HMFA Program, or the Opportunity Zone Growth Funding that's, um, being offered right now. Did you, um, advise Mr. Roth and Mr. Shotlin, um, as to how you can get more density but not so much density to work through creative funding processes such as those that I mentioned?
Susan, I can tell you that that is not a question that we asked Tom to provide answers to.
Okay.
Uh, we have an architect, uh, I have the architect's brother who's an engineer, who is trained as an engineer, who worked for quite a number of years for a big developer, doing the cost, uh, calculating and such for that developer. I've relied on him, uh, more than I would expect to rely on Tom in terms of what I know Tom's background to be. Tom may have been part of some of these discussions, but we were not, at least I was not relying on him to find us funding sources or anything of that nature. We, we initially wanted, I want initially wanted the other floor, I wanted some amenities, but in reactions from the board members, uh, I pushed to, uh, shrink the project a little bit to make it more desirable. From the, uh, questions, not, not to me, but from the questions that I heard, uh, we put the parking structure, I kinda like an erector set. Uh, as a kid, I had one, and I fascinated watching mechanical things work. But in the course of discussions with the team I'm working with, we said, we'll have a garage and we'll put it in the garage, we can do that. So it, it won't be seen, uh, in the same way. But these are the practical adjustments you have to make with something like this in, in an effort to make the thing work. You know, also, when we talk about parking, uh, there's certainly parking on Court Street, which is day and night. There's parking on Main Street, these are on Mine Street, these are less than a block away, so if somebody doesn't want to walk to a more distant, uh, public parking lot, uh, they can look at these other alternatives. I mean, people, uh, using the building to our north, they have no parking. They have to find parking spaces, and they do.
Susan, do you have other questions?
No, that's it, thank you.
Other members of the board with questions for the planner on the testimony given? I do have one, um, if everyone else has had a chance, uh, Mr. Sterns, you said, um, and I jotted this down, I don't know if I get the quote exactly right, but in, in referring to the, um, the enclosed carousel, you said, no one's ever gonna see it unless they're looking for it, or something along those lines.
Yes, that's correct.
Um, the architecture A thirteen rendering, uh, show, image eleven in particular, shows a thirty-eight foot tall white blank slate that is clearly visible from any, by any pedestrian walking along Main Street. So can you give us some explanation as to how you can justify saying, no one's ever gonna see it unless you're looking for it, when there's a nearly forty-foot plain white wall that is clearly visible to every pedestrian on Main Street, after you gave all this great testimony about the, the architectural context of the, the neighborhood in and around it?
Well, I think I was referring, um, I might have been referring to the building, uh, the, the building in the back, and, uh, I'm looking for the image here. Give me a second here, Doug stuff. Yeah, I was, um, you know, and he doesn't, uh, are these numbered?
Image eleven on page A thirteen is the best one.
Uh, well, that's specifically the one I'm talking about.
I'm looking at his PowerPoint he did in the last, uh, the last presentation.
I don't have it in front of me, but doesn't that have windows?
But, but, but I, I'm looking at the one where it was the view across Main Street, where you're looking back at the building in the rear, and, and you're, you're, you're across Main Street, and you, you see the front building, and there's just a narrow driveway.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the experience of pedestrians, business, you know, they, business patrons, residents, and everybody else, standing, um, probably, two hundred feet to the south on the same side of the street, kind of in front of the, the office building, or the old, the, not, maybe not quite as far as the, uh, the old, uh, large mansion where the, the Chamber Commerce is now, but maybe the building one to the north of that. You're looking north.
Yeah, that's true, from that, from that view, you do see the building.
Right, and, and what I'm saying is that you're, you're, my question is then, you're, you're saying that you're not, you know, there's a, there's an impact on the zone plan of this plain white facade, um, that is clearly jutting up, you know, a whole story above the building next to it.
I don't know if that's a, I wouldn't say that's a negative impact, I mean, you have, you know, you have that condition all over town, where you have a, you know, a higher building next to a lower building.
You, can you give examples elsewhere in Main Street where plain white facades unbroken up by penetrations, fenestrations, or any other kind of differentiation exist with such a plain palette on, in anywhere in the DB zone like that?
Well, to be honest, I haven't made a study, I haven't made a study of it.
You can put windows in it, there are things.
Mr. Roth, I'm asking the plan, Mr. Roth, I'm sorry, I'm asking the planner to give testimony on the planning criteria to grant relief for this structure, and I'm asking him to please comment on impact to the zone, which is a planning question.
I, I don't think there's impact to this, well, to answer your first question, I haven't made a detailed study, I haven't walked around to see if there's a similar, um, you know, blank, blank white walls, um, you know, that you can see from Main Street. So, I, I don't have the data, uh, to, uh, to, to tell you that.
Okay, that's, that's the answer to the question, you don't, you, you don't have the answer, that's, I'm gonna leave it at that, and I'm gonna just one last pass if there's other members of the board with questions for the planner. Okay, so now I'm gonna go to members of the public who may have questions for, uh, the planner on the testimony given um, this evening as well as last, uh, hearing. Um, and again, it looks like no one's dialed in, so you can use the raise hand function. And then, um, if not, use star nine. Cara, I have a question for you, I'm seeing that, uh, Mr. Lanza has his hand quite, what are we, how are we handling this?
Well, I'd like to know if he has a question for the applicant, or if he has a question from a procedural standpoint. To reiterate what I said before, since we have yet to resolve the issue of conflict, we are going to hold off on allowing any participation from the Objectors Council until the next meeting, um, at which point we will have resolved that issue. But as, uh, Lee indicated, he will have all of his witnesses that are here tonight available at the next hearing, so that, uh, Objectors Council will have the opportunity to question them at that time. In addition, putting on whatever presentation they have.
So I'm gonna let Mr. Lanza talk, um, Mr. Lanza, can you, just, what's the nature of the question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The question is, one, a procedure, during, uh, the initial, uh, discussion of my representation of Main Street Associates, you've made a ruling, Mr. Chairman, that I'd only be able to cross-examine, uh, the witnesses on testimony today. Obviously, the, uh, this is the first opportunity for the opponent to challenge this witness, so I would submit that I'm entitled to, uh, cross-examine Mr. Stern, uh, Sterns, uh, on his whole testimony. I have looked at his, uh, video testimony from the last meeting, but it was not until this moment that, uh, the objector had an opportunity to question him on anything.
Um, that's a, that's a, that's a valid point, and I'm, what I'm gonna say is, um, I may have misspoken, I don't know the answer to this. Cara, perhaps we can brief that question and have an determination before the next meeting?
Uh, yes, we can do that, I, I, I have an idea as to how I think this should be handled. Um, Mr. Sterns is here tonight to answer questions from everyone with regard to the entirety of his testimony, um, since that was not done by members of the professionals, um, so it, it, I think we should finalize the discussion offline, but, um, I'll just make that point, uh, on the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank you, Mr. Lanza, um. All right, um, are there other members of the public who have questions on the planning testimony? I see director@flemingtonFCP.com, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that's Robin Lepetus, but if you could please identify yourself, name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, it is Robin Lepetus, the Executive Director at the Flemington Community Partnership. And I hope this is allowed, I don't have a question, I just want, I tried to call in last time, just to, uh, clear up the record that the study kept getting referred to as the FCP's study, and the study that I believe is being referred to is actually the Opportunity Zone Challenge Grant, um, study, and it's not the FCP, it's the FCP, the Borough of Flemington, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Economic Development Office of Hunterdon County. So can I just clear that up for the record?
Robin, was that during Mr. Stern's testimony that that reference was made?
It was made several times by Mr. Sterns, and it, I, other people were, I believe, may have referred to it as the FCP's study, and I just want to be really clear, what study is being referred to, and who is the sponsor of said study?
Did you, I, I, just to clarify, you did mention that the County of Hunterdon was funded, was part of the funding for that?
It's not the fu, the funding for the study is for, is the Opportunity Zone Challenge Grant Award that we received from the NJEDA. But the partnership producing the study is the partnership of the Borough of Flemington, the Flemington Community Partnership, the Chamber of Commerce, and the, um, Office of Economic Development of Hunterdon County.
Thank you.
So we're the managing partner team producing and directing this particular study, but the funding came from the NJEDA.
Okay, there's, I, I, Cara, I, thanks, thanks, Robin, I know, Cara, normally we don't allow statements, we're going questions here, but I think that that was, um, important to just make sure we have that on the record correctly.
No, and I do agree, um, so Robin, just one final, i- is there a specific title to that study that we should be referencing? If so, what is?
Yes, I believe it's called the, uh, maybe Susan can help me, it's the, um, Community Consensus Project. That was what we were calling it.
Okay, we can look into that a little in, in more detail, I think everyone, uh, I think Mr. Sterns and, and, and Lee know which one we're talking about, uh, so we can, uh, be prepared at the next meeting to just have the formal, proper title for that study, so we can put that into the record, but thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you, I, I, thank you very much.
Other members of the public who wish to ask a question of Mr. Sterns on the planning testimony, please raise your hand. Okay, not seeing any other, uh, questions, um, I'm gonna thank Mr. Sterns for his testimony, I'm gonna move him from panelist, um, back down to, uh, participant, and I'm gonna, um, ask if, uh, we can have the next, uh, witness, Mr. Roth?
Thank you.
Mr. Roth, you're muted, I'm sorry.
I can't see who the attendees are, but I'm assuming that Doug Shotlin is among them.
He is, would you, is that who you want, you'd like to call next? Okay.
Yes. And Doug has already sworn, he's submitted a document that you requested, he appears to be muted.
Hello?
There he is.
Okay, so before we get started on his testimony, uh, Lee, can we just reference the new documents that he's going to be testifying to, so we can mark them? I think Eileen, if I'm correct, we're up to A ten?
She's muted.
Eileen?
Maybe Doug can tell you what the, uh, documents were that he prepared.
Uh, I don't know what the exhibit numbers are, but, um, I prepared an exhibit, uh, having to do with the separation of commercial and residential uses.
Okay, I have one here, it's labeled ninety-one Main Street, um, Roman numeral one, separation of commercial and residential uses, call it elevation change and accessibility.
And this is the second one, um.
Okay, so let's just stick on that one for a second, so that's the cover sheet. Um, after that, I have one labeled, and I don't know if they're, uh, Lee, if you or Doug have the ability to put them on the screen, so everybody can see what we're talking about. Uh, the next one I have is labeled Main Street View, one-story commercial space. Uh, the next one is driveway side view, one-story commercial space, another driveway side view, interior, okay, yep. All right, so how many pages are associated with that exhibit?
Well, I have, I'd combined my two exhibits into one for, for my presentation purposes, but I'll flip through quickly to see. So it looks like, uh, thirteen.
Okay, so that's thirteen, which consists of, uh, Roman numeral one, two, and three, and the attachments.
That's, no, that was Roman numerals one and two, Roman numeral three was, would look like.
All right, so that's Roman numerals one and two, thirteen pages, and we're marking that as A ten. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, I wanted to address a, a few, uh, questions that, that people had last time I spoke, and also, um, go into more detail about a few things, so the first thing, uh, I want to talk about the front building first. The separation of the commercial and residential uses, I think there was some question as to why the line between the, the commercial and residential uses is where it is. And, um, the short answer to that is, there's a, there's an elevation difference between the two parts of the building already. So I'll show you, this is the front of the building from the street, and this is the commercial space, this one-story part. And here's a view from the side, so you can see how high it is relative to the rest of the building. And this, this diagram shows, this green line shows the difference in height between the floor levels of the two parts. It's two foot two difference between the front part and the back part. And the reason that's important is, if you look inside, this is a view, looking in the front door, towards the back, you'll see these stairs that separate the lower part from the upper part, and that's important for accessibility. So, right now, you can see, you can roll up in a wheelchair, for example, uh, into this front space, and it's accessible. And if you want to go to the back, you can't get there. So, I thought it made sense, and, uh, Mr. Roth, I think, agreed that if this, if these, this, this, this building is gonna be as accessible as it can be, we should make that the line of demarcation between the two uses. So the, the, the front space is thirty-nine foot, nine and a half wide, and twelve foot eight deep, about four hundred and forty-one square feet. And there's a bathroom, I'll show you a plan in a moment, uh, a bathroom is proposed, accessible bathroom is proposed for the left side of the floor plan. You can, this is the existing on the left. You can, this is the existing on the left, including sections and elevations of the interior. This is a conference room, reception area, and this is the center hall with a stair. And on the right, we have one space with this bathroom, ADA bathroom. So we thought it made sense to separate, separate the two types, the two types of uses this way. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the, the cladding of the building, of the front building, and also the importance of the air barrier. I know it's important to a lot of people in town to maintain as much of the, as much of the original material as possible on the exterior of this building. And I totally agree. The, I've worked on a lot of old buildings over the last 25 years, including 123 Main. I worked on that for about four years with my own hands, and I saw what happens when you take siding off a building like that. It's very similar age and very similar in condition to this one. And what happens is it disintegrates. I'll show you some photos of what's there now. You can, you can see from the inside of the attic, you can see how much light comes through this wall. It's barely, it's really more like a screen than a wall. And if we weren't worried about energy efficiency, I would say, fine, let's leave it. A lot of this wood is in very, very bad condition. It's dry rotted, which is actually caused by moisture, by fungi that grow, that thrive in moisture conditions. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of cracking, splitting, this poor paint adhesion. Show you some pictures of the outside, you can see the paint peeling off. Some of this wood is probably not original, some of it is probably relatively new. But there are moisture problems in this building that caused the paint to pop off and caused the wood to rot. So that's what's happening. So this, this material, some of it's very old, some of it's not. It's not, it's not destined to last very long, and what we're going for here is a durable building that, that is comfortable, energy efficient and, and looks good for many, many years. So as you all know, one of the main goals of this project is to create energy efficient structures. So a very important reason I'm bringing all this up about the siding is to create an energy efficient structure out of this building will need to create an airtight building envelope. The whole perimeter of the building has to be sealed up. And that means taking off the existing siding, and if we could put it back on, we would. But I have a feeling, based on my experience, that that's not going to work, it's not feasible. And I want to explain why air sealing is important. Air, an air barrier is the, is one of the most important jobs of the building enclosure, because it keeps out, it keeps air out of the, of the interior of the building, which might get drawn in when you, when you pull air out through exhaust fans or cooking, cooking hoods. If, in a tight building, if you, if you pull out air, air comes in to replace it. And it's especially important, and especially true of tight buildings like this one's going to be. So what happens is when air is drawn in, it, it carries vapor, water vapor with it. And the air with the moisture and it gets trapped in the walls, and it will cause mold growth and it will rot out the structure in probably only a few years. So it's actually a very, in a tight building, you really have to keep the air out. You have to work very hard to keep the air out, and that's done by creating an air barrier system. So the, the reason it's called a system is that it's not just a little bit of patching here and there. It's not individual barrier materials, but actually an assemblage of, of materials that cover every joint seam and penetration on the building, top to bottom. There are many ways to create that kind of an air barrier system, but continuity is the critical feature. So to get continuity, what we need to do is remove this siding, replace it with OSB or plywood, some kind of a sheet material. And that's the start. Then you, you tape it up, you use all kinds of materials to, to create the continuity that you need. So it's, it's not just important for energy efficiency, it's important for that too, but it's really more important for the longevity of the building and for the health of the occupants in the building. Want to go back to this picture again, the inside. So when you look at this, this, this may keep out rain, but not wind-driven rain, and certainly not moisture in any quantity. I mean, it's, it's really got to be, this really has to be addressed properly, so it will last and perform, perform well. Some people were concerned about the loss of, of materials, corbels, decorative materials, you can see some right here. This kind of thing will be preserved, it has to be preserved. It's not easy to replicate it. It's got to be, it's got to be maintained, it's got to be repaired if necessary. It's not, and it's also solid wood, you can see it's, it's heavier and denser than a lot of this thin siding material. So it's held up better over the years. So that will be restored and repaired as necessary. And any other unique, unique details, such as some of the trim, will be, will be maintained. So I'd like to, to move on to the next, the next, the parking enclosure, the next section. That's a different, a different exhibit, which I've combined into this presentation.
So Kara, we're going to mark this, I guess, A11, is that where we're up to? You're muted, Kara.
Sorry, that's correct. This will be A11, Title 91 Main Street, Roman numeral three, Rotary Park structure. And how many pages is that, Doug?
Okay.
Is it seven pages, Doug?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to be talking next about the, the parking carousel and enclosure. I've looked at a lot of the details more carefully since the last time I spoke, and I've talked to the previous, the, the two parking and engineer experts who spoke last time. Jeff Roberts, structural engineer, and the Parkmatic representative, Santiago Rios, have talked to them a lot more about how to work with these, this product, because this is actually, this is a new thing for me too. So I've learned a lot from the testimony, which I thought was excellent, and I've learned a lot from talking with them, and I've decided to incorporate some of their recommendations into the design. So before I dive into that, I'd like to answer a couple of the questions that were asked when they were testifying and just before I get into all the other details. So one person asked if the bi-park system, which is the two-car lift, can accommodate full-size SUVs, and the answer to that is yes. I did some research on that. Another question asked was, will there be ventilation, ventilation fan for exhaust fumes in the enclosure? And the answer to that is yes. Also, there would be a fan on the roof. Another question was, is there a door on the parking enclosure, the front door? The answer to that is no. In site, in site section A03 in my last set of drawings, which I can pull up if everyone, if anyone needs to see it. Did everyone see that? Site section?
Okay, just for the, for the record, this is sheet A03 that had been previously entered into exhibit as part of the submission of materials, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's dated 4/1/21.
So I can see why some people were confused. This does look like a door. It's not a door, it's an opening. What you're seeing there is the inside of the back wall, you're seeing through an opening into the back wall. And I apologize for the, the confusion there. But this, this, these drawings all come from the 3D model, so they're all just kind of snapshots and different views of, of the same thing. So you can see in the, in the other drawings that this is an opening, not a, not a door. Another question was, is there a back wall in the parking enclosure? And if you, you go back. I believe the person who had a question was asking about, was referring to this drawing, which is A04 in that same set of drawings. There was a question about whether there is a, a wall back here, and there is, you have to look at it very closely, but there is thickness to this wall. And you can see it on the other level, second floor level and third floor level, there is a wall. This diagram was meant to, to show the relative apartment sizes, not the construction of the, of the parking enclosure. So it probably wasn't, it's not as evident that there's a back wall in these drawings. That's not what the purpose of this drawing is, but it is there. And if you look at the other drawings, you'll, in that set, you'll see that it is in fact there. So let me start, go back to the this enclosure. So I've, I've done a drawing here, a much more detailed drawing of the enclosure and the carousel itself. So you can see there's this dark gray line around it, this thick line, that's the structure, that's the enclosure structure. And this is going to be vetted by a structural engineer and probably eventually the building code official in town too. But the plan right now is to create a steel frame structure around, around this carousel with, with concrete block infill and then cement board siding, the hardy reveal panel system on the outside. So this is going to be a two-hour rated, fire-rated structure. Very, in case there's a fire, which I doubt there would be, but if there ever were, the buildings around it are very well protected, and there's also going to be a fire sprinkler system inside, so there's many layers of protection if anything should happen.
Doug, for the record, this, this is a new submission, correct?
Yes, this is the second, the second of two exhibits I've combined into, into one.
Okay, so that's, that's part of A11, part of the seven pages. Thank you.
So the, let me talk about the size and location of this thing. It's slightly moved, but now it's, it's, it's more precisely located. So you can see here, the total depth of the parking structure, the enclosure is 21 foot nine and a quarter, from outside of material to outside of material. And then there's a three-inch gap between the outside of the enclosure and the property line, and then another three and a half inches to the adjacent building, so six and a half inches total between the two. And on the other side, on the north side, there's a 24-foot space for circulation, for backing up and getting in to the structure, and this is, this dash line is the property line on the north side. And I'm told by the, our civil engineer that 24 feet is adequate for circulation. And I wanted to maximize that. The enclosure itself, as I said, first of all, I'm required by law to work with a New Jersey licensed professional structural engineer to design all these buildings, and this is no exception. I'll be working with, with my engineer on this. But as I said, the plan currently is to design a, a four-by-a-four-inch square tube steel frame with four-inch concrete baser units infilling it. And I, I'm sure the steel that's exposed will have to be sprayed with a, a fire protectant as well. But it's going to be a very, very fire-resistant structure. I think it only actually needs a two, a one-hour reading, but we're going for two anyway, just to be safe. The, again, the cladding material on the outside is hardy reveal panel system. And the enclosure will be integrated into the adjacent deck and the back building. The, the structural engineer, Jeff Roberts, talked about that. It's important to integrate. And I was not fully aware of that until I spoke with him afterwards, after my last testimony, and he testified. We need to integrate these three structures. One thing I wanted, I wanted to address one point that was just brought up and with Mr. Sterns about the blank facade on the, this south wall. That facade, we would love to put windows in that facade. It would look a lot better, I agree. We didn't because building code prohibits windows, prohibits openings on walls that are less than three feet from the property line. And I have some ideas about what could be done to make that better-looking if the board, you know, if the board would like it to be, and we could, we could create fake windows, windows with, with wall behind them. So I don't think you'd be able to tell the difference from the street that there's wall behind those windows. That's one option. Another option would be to, to make the facade more interesting with some kind of a pattern, a contrasting color. Or it could be any color, it doesn't have to be white. But we are open to suggestions, the board suggestions on, on that, in that regard. You continue. Talk about the foundation a little bit. The foundation, and I don't want, I don't want to repeat the testimony of the engineer and the, and Mr. Rios, but I wanted to just explain a little bit about the the foundation. These yellow circles represent the location of concrete piles that would be three feet, set in three feet from the edge of the slab that this whole structure sits on. And you'll, I'll show you a section and some side views, some perspective views in a moment. But it's important to see where these are in plan. These are concrete piles that would be, they'd be drilled or augured out on site, and then they'd be filled with concrete, and they'd be integrated into the slab. So here is a side here, this is a side view of the whole structure. Here's the slab. The thickness will be determined by, be determined by our structural engineer. And this is the, the concrete pile, there's one on each side. And you'll see here, this is a detailed drawing. This, the bottom of the pile has to be below the bottom of the adjacent building foundation. My engineer will determine how far below. I can't answer that question, but it must be below because the load that's coming down this pier from, from the structure above spreads out into the ground at an angle from this point down. And if it were too high, it would spread out against this wall. That can't happen. Jeff Roberts talked about that. So the purpose of this deep foundation is to send the load from the building above into the ground in a way that won't affect the adjacent building. And in talking to him, I'm very confident that this system will work. He described them as a case-on type concrete pile, so they would be drilled and then poured, not, not pounded in like some pilings. Okay. There's some perspective views of what this looks like. This is the pile right here. Another view, so you can see how it relates to the adjacent building. Any load will come out from the bottom at an angle and not affect the adjacent building. Incidentally, this is a side note. I've added a perk, I've added a, an enclosure for the trash and recycling bins. That's, I think it's a good idea. Someone on the board recommended that last time. So let me move on now to the next section, which is about the energy demand of the building. Some people were asking about energy demand. I didn't have a good answer last time, so I wanted to, to give you a little bit more information and about the, the role of the panels. The photo will take panels. This is an excerpt from a previous presentation. My last, my last testimony, where we talk about the, the net zero concept. There are two steps in creating a net zero building. There are two steps in creating a net zero building. The first thing is to reduce the energy demand by 80 to 90% with a building, with a good building design, the energy efficient components and equipment. And the second thing is to generate the remaining energy needed with solar. So the goal for these buildings is to meet the passive house standard, which is the highest efficiency, energy, energy efficiency standard available. Uh, so that, that's how we're going to minimize the energy demand. And the passive house standard, this is sort of technical, the passive house standard says that to be certified passive house, a building cannot use more than 4.75 kilowatt hours per square foot per year. And that is not just electricity, that's any form of energy. So it can be, that's, that's the European way of, of, uh, talking about energy. But in, in America, we use BTUs. Sometimes when we're talking about natural gas or, or fossil fuels and electricity, we talk about kilowatt hours too. So that applies to all energy used by this building is very low demand. So the purpose of the, of the PV panels, panels on the roof is to satisfy the remaining energy demand with solar electricity. So nothing but electricity on, on the site. So based on my preliminary calculation, I'm not an engineer and I'm not a, a solar installer, but based on my calculation, um, the, we will need a 30 kilowatt system. And we have limited roof area. Uh, close to 2,000 square feet, but depending on the efficiency of the panels we use and the layout determined by the installer, we should be able to generate the electricity we need to make up the difference between, um, what we, what we need on the, uh, on the site and what's, what's produced by the panels. So we'll be able to get very, very close to providing all the energy we need on site, I think. And this is not a, I want to point out, this is not an all or nothing situation. This is a, a goal. And we think it's a very, a very worthy goal. And the more energy we produce on site, the better. If we don't make it a hundred percent, that's too bad, but we, I think 98% is great. So it's an important, important point. It's just a goal. It's not a requirement. And, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. If you, if you wouldn't mind, stop sharing for just a moment, you may need to pull it back up, um, just so I can see everybody and appreciate it. Um, we'll start with, uh, questions for our professionals on, uh, the additional testimony given, um, this evening by, uh, by the architect. Let me start with Bob. Do you have any additional questions?
Uh, yes, you can pull that exhibit up to show the floor plan of, of the, um, of the mobile unit with the dimensioning of the buildings.
Is this the drawing you referred to?
Yeah, I think that's it. So you, you indicated there's no door on the opening, but the, the width of the opening is, is what?
Nine.
How wide is that?
Nine feet.
Nine feet on, on the edge of the structure?
Yes.
And, and that structure is a 20, what was the dimension out from the, um?
The dimension out from the property line is 22 feet and a quarter inch. And this, the building itself is, it's set off three inches. So that's 21 foot nine and a quarter.
And in comparison to the adjoining parking space, I guess the handicap space to the up on the drawing, I'm not sure what direction that is.
These are 18.
Those are 18. So the, the, this, the structure on this building is four foot out from where the normal parking, the unrestricted parking space would be, basically a painted parking space.
Right.
Correct.
This is a van space, yes.
Correct. And, and the opening is a, uh, it, it is a structure on either side of that nine foot opening. We're not just dealing with a striped space on a parking lot. We're dealing with a physical structure.
Right.
Okay. I just want, I just really want to kind of clarify that. I'm, I'm going to have some other questions for the engineer when he testifies as to the turning movements. And I just wanted to clarify what the constraints we're dealing with here.
Okay, um, Beth, did you have anything for, uh, Mr. Shalton?
I don't have any questions, but just to note that, uh, I wanted to highlight the fact that the screening of the trash receptacle area was, was proposed and I appreciate that. And if the board does, uh, issue an approval of any kind of, like, I'd just like to have a detail of that added to the plans. But I have no questions, uh, at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Jay, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Members of the board, do you have, uh, Cara, please, Cara, good.
Sorry, really quickly, two questions. Um, did we get a height? You mentioned that there's going to be a ventilation fan located on the roof, uh, for, to deal with those exhaust, exhaust fume issues. Do we have, is there a height calculation to the top of that fan?
Uh, I don't have one. I don't have, uh, we haven't picked the, the actual fan unit and it actually, it could be on the top of, of one of the walls too. It's going to be less, less likely to be seen from the roof. And I think we can, we have a parapet on the roof and I think we can find a way to keep it under the top of the parapet.
Okay. I was just concerned about the height. Um, and then, and this very well could be on the engineering drawing. So, um, it may be more appropriately answered by him, but you, you referenced the depth of the adjacent foundation. How was that determined? Was that determined from engineering drawings or from, by the way?
We don't know what the depth of the adjacent foundation is. And, uh, I think I I think I put a note on here. Yeah. Um, so 95 main, 95 Main Street foundation depth to be verified in field.
Okay.
We'll have to, we'll have to dig to find that. And then this system will, for the parking enclosure will be designed based on that depth.
Got it. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board with questions, Mr. Budney.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. A couple of questions. I want to pick up on the, um, uh, the vent fan. When the, uh, the previous testimony by the, uh, designers, it was Mr. Roberts and Mr. Rios. I mean, they had testified time and time again about how quiet the operation of that, of the, uh, the parking system was going to be. And they said it was going to be, you know, very quiet, 50 decibels. Even if it was operated in the middle of the night, it wouldn't disturb, uh, sleeping residents there. Uh, so question is, at what points does that fan operate? Was that, um, is that a continuous fan? Or is it only in operation when the unit's in operation? And what's the noise levels emanating from that fan?
Um, I can't answer those questions. We haven't picked the fan, but it's probably not going to have to be a very large fan. I don't think it's, it's not going to be like a restaurant fan. I don't think it will be operating all the time, probably on some kind of a sensor that operates only when it needs to. It may be, it may have a CO sensor, a carbon monoxide sensor. So it only operates when it needs to. But I, I would not, I would not expect it to be more than 200 CFM. So like a bathroom fan.
Okay. And would that be designed to be, um, do you know if that would designed to be, uh, the same noise level or less than the operation of the unit?
I, I would say so, yes. They're very quiet.
Okay. And also to your question about the, uh, uh, the, the building facade to, to make it look better to, for some, uh, design improvements. Have you discussed any of yours, your uh, thoughts in this with the Historic Preservation Commission? Cause they're ultimately going to be the ones that are going to have the final say in that.
Hmm, I haven't.
Okay. That's my best recommendation.
We're, we're open to suggestions.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Um, other members of the board with questions on, uh, Mr. Shalton's testimony this evening. Uh, Karen, please.
Um, I just had a quick one and really it's a follow-up from, um, something Brian touched on, the, um, the foundation depth, the pile. Um, you just asked, did you, was I correct in hearing that you're saying you're going to dig a hole to find the bottom of the found, current foundation of the Macasa building? To determine the depth of the pile you need to put in?
Yes, that's the only way to do it, as far as I know.
Where, where do you propose to do that? Is that anywhere on your site plan where you're going to do that? Um, and how do you propose to do that without, without, um, affecting the current foundation? How much are you going to open up?
The building is right on the property line. So the digging would be on 91, on the 91 main site. Uh, the, I wouldn't be surprised, we don't know this yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if the footing for that building is on 91 main property. Uh, I would not, I don't think anyone plans to undermine the foundation of the existing building. That would be a very bad idea. So digging just to expose it and, and see what we're dealing with would be all this, that happens, I think.
Okay, thank you. Do, um, do you have any, um, current drawings to give you any guidance on, on, on what the, the current foundation might be there? Or have you been in touch with that property owner?
I haven't, I have not, and I haven't seen any drawings.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Uh, other members of the boards with questions for Mr. Shalton. Susan.
Um, Mr. Shatlin, from the time that you guys originally submitted this application in January, didn't you guys already go to the HPC and get some feedback?
We did.
Okay. And the result of that was the bringing it down one story in the back and the, um, the more, I'd say more, I don't want to say modern, but, uh, uh, more sensitive design changes that you went on in detail. So, so I just want to make it clear, because Mr. Roth has said this twice now, that it wasn't this board that gave you feedback that affected the height or the aesthetics of what we're seeing now. We had not had any comments on the aesthetics prior to whenever your first meeting was here in April. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
I, I would have to say that, for instance, Mr. Cook had talked about what would the view be as you drove up and down Main Street. Uh, that was one of the comments that we took into consideration.
Right, but that comment that Mr. Cook made was, um, uh, made after, uh, you submitted this current improved, I may say, elevation. So I, I just want to go on record that the change, um, the major change from January to April was not aesthetically, was not influenced by this board. It could not have been influenced by this board because you hadn't received any feedback from this board up to that point. Um, when we received this new set of drawings, we had not heard any testimony yet. Um, so I just want to make it, make, uh, make it clear. So now my question is, do they have to go back to the HPC? As a result of this, of these aesthetic changes? Or is the feedback from the HPC that's already been reflected in these latest drawings, um, done? Because I guess her testimony that we, they would possibly have to go back.
Well, we've been, we've been required to submit the drawings and documents that we assume are distributed to everybody who needs to see them.
Cara, if you could weigh in, please.
Uh, yeah, so this is a bit of a unique situation. We don't always have ones like this. Uh, the plans as they were originally submitted were submitted to the HBC. Comments were made, um, and Eileen can correct me if I'm wrong, but as Lee said, as revised plans are submitted, an additional documentation is submitted, the HBC is getting copies of those. Um, I don't believe, and the, uh, longer members of the board, uh, prior to my tenure could correct me, but I don't believe we have ever required a re-submission or a re-comment from the HPC. However, that being said, um, this is a public meeting. And this public meeting is open at all times and there is absolutely nothing, uh, stopping any member of the HPC from commenting on the application, commenting on changes, making recommendations. And certainly there's nothing stopping the, the applicant from having additional discussions with the HPC, um, to address any concerns that they may bring to the table at a public meeting.
Their, their formal comment has already happened.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make clear.
Right.
Cause Brian's comment made it seem like they were going back and I didn't think that was right.
No, and, but what we have done in the past on, on occasion is we have put as a condition of approval in certain circumstances, satisfaction to the board's planner and, you know, in consultation with HPC on certain certain aspects of the application that we felt that we wanted them to at least take a renewed look at. But it was again, the, but final, the final, um, say so went with the, with the board's planner, uh, you know.
And the board, the board doesn't need to decide that right now.
No, we do not. That would, that would be something that we could put in certainly. Um, if any approvals were to be granted as a condition, we could certainly talk about that down the road.
Exactly. I didn't want to, I don't want to harp on it too much. I just, I could see there was a procedural question here that was, that was not clear. So I wanted to clarify that.
And I just have one quick clarification question to that. And that's probably best answered by Mr. Roth is, do you have a current application before the HPC right now? Or have they issued an approval already?
They gave us a review letter, Brian, already.
But have they conducted a formal review at a meeting yet?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It happened before it came to us.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Before it came to us.
Both.
Okay.
For members of the public, let me just be clear. Any external board that provides opinions to the planning board must do so before the commencement of the public hearing. So HPC, Shade Tree, Environmental, all of those bodies, their opportunity, um, to review an application before our board, um, happens and we get those before the commencement of the public hearing. So there is no further formal, um, uh, process for them to do that. They've, they've had their chance.
Right. And just to add to that, Jeff, that, that their, their recommendations not, and, and we as the board, uh, as the planning board are, you know, make the final decision whether we want to, you know, add any resolutions or requirements on, onto our resolution related to those recommendations. Okay. I'm sorry. I have three, four more questions.
Go ahead.
Can we move on from this? Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Shatlin, the, this is gonna, I'm gonna have to ask the same question to the civil engineer, but I want to ask you first kind of to give them some forewarning. The revised drawings that reflect the clear and much better presented, excellent, excellent presentation, those, those, uh, those three extra pages that you provided related to the parking garage enclosure, the footings and everything else that really defined it much better than in previous presentations. That updated plan that reflects that enclosure, I'm assuming that plan has now been forwarded to the civil engineer and his drawings will be updated accordingly. Specifically, the, um, the, and I think Bob kind of insinuated this. He'll have some additional questions, but specifically the amount of space that they have to back up. I know you just testified there were 24 feet, but I want to see that reflected on the most recent civil drawings. And I want to make sure that you provide your most recent architecturals to the civil.
I believe the drawings are in, in agreement with each other.
Okay. That's what we'll need to see it the next time. I just wanted to ask if you've provided those to your civil or not. Great. Thank you. Um, Mr. Shatlin, your, uh, your revised and your original, I believe, uh, devariance application dated, uh, March 31st, specifically says that the rear building has been designed as a net zero energy NZE building on energy use. Since this application was submitted, it officially, this is one big building with, you know, two hour, um, two hour walls that kind of connect all three, architecturally, three separate buildings, but they're connected as one. Can you clarify, is the rear building planned to be net zero? Is the parking structure planned to be next zero? Is the front structure planned to be net, net zero? Which of those, of any of those three are?
Uh, the front and back building are net zero and the parking enclosure is not, has no reason to be.
Okay. So the, on page 24 of your application, that's been updated now. So it's not just the rear building. It's the front and back. I don't even want to call buildings anymore, but building sections basically, um, are both net zero you're proposing now.
Yes.
Okay. That makes more sense because I'm hearing a lot of stuff about bringing the front up to, up to, you know, some sort of energy standard, but it, it wasn't reflected in your application. Um, so that helps. Can I ask you, Mr. Shatlin? The New Jersey Energy Code that when, and I'm not as familiar with what's required for this size multifamily, you know, proposed building. The New Jersey Energy Code in much larger multifamily housing projects that I've had experienced with, require something called a comm check, which is very similar to what you described, that you submit. require something called a COM check, which is very similar to what you described, that you submit at the end for net zero certification. Do you know if this building is required by the New Jersey Energy Code? Because I know you have to follow the New Jersey Energy Code, of course. Do you have to submit a COM check? And are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, of both.
Okay, that, so you really are going through that whole, that somewhat net zero process of kind of knowing how the building's gonna perform prior to it even being built through the COM check process.
Yeah, I mean, the COM check is not nearly as, the requirements for the COM, to pass COM check are not nearly as stringent as the passive house standards, so.
That's what I figured, and I'm kind of excited to see the, see it, so. It's actually a really exciting idea to have, you know, the first net zero building, residential building, right? In New Jersey is what you're proposing?
First residential, I guess, first multifamily structure, passive house structure in in net zero.
That's what you had. Very good. Okay, and the final one is one that I alluded to in your first round of testimony, and I didn't get a clear response, and then I asked again a similar question to Mr. Stern's, and Mr. Roth mentioned that he did get feedback from you during the planning process of this site. As you know, you, the applicant, not you, the applicant has to provide some sort of proof of burden in order for us to approve the variances that are requested. And in this case, moving from office to residential. The, we as a board can't take into consideration financial burden. We can consider that, you know, we understand the testimony that you've submitted, that, you know, retail and office are not as prevalent right now in the market, but we can't take, we can't ask you for like a pro forma and say, you know, prove to us that financially this works. So Mr. Roth had testified when I asked this earlier this evening that that, that when you had submitted originally 10 and then nine units, how you came up with that number, how it works on the site, you know, it, there's like 10 pounds of shit going into a five pound bag on the site. It's a very, very tight site. I get it. I'm sorry if I swore, but that's, you know, what's going on here. And what I need to understand is that you, as the designer, consulted your owner slash applicant to make sure that you were as efficient as you can with the number of units so that we as a board can justify, find justification for a large number of units on a very small site. So what I would want, what I'm asking is, did you consider and did you research funding options for them in order to bring that number down from nine to something less that still will work with their pro forma? Specifically, the, you know, you had mentioned the net zero program, the DOE has a Building America program that's part of that, that net zero program. The Enterprise Green Buildings Funding, the OZ Grant Funding, that's all, you know, popular now, or the NJH MFA Funding. Did you have those discussions with your clients, and if so, how did those discussions go?
I've got to interrupt to say that that, he was not assigned to make the, any financial calculations. If he was, he probably wouldn't have pushed as hard as he did in the direction toward net zero. It could have been done at less cost.
Yeah, that's not my area of expertise. I focus on the design, how to make the most beautiful and most efficient buildings on the site. That's about it.
Okay, thanks. That's all my questions. Good, okay. No, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Other members of the board, Hannah, please. You're muted.
Sorry. I just had a potentially simple question, and Mr. Shaw, and you may be on this. It's about the solar energy and kind of writing on Susan, what she was just kind of discussing a little bit. So those buildings that are net zero energy, they're going to be relying on the solar panels for their, for the electricity and everything, right?
Right.
So will they be able to do that on the get-go? Is there something that they're gonna, there's a charging, you know, station or something that happens, or does it something that has to charge over time and?
No, they'll, once they're, once everything's hooked up, it will operate and.
It will, okay.
Yeah, I talked about this in my last testimony.
Yeah, sorry if I'm making your.
I don't know if you remember, the system is connected to the power grid. And it, of course, solar can't produce power at night, so it draws from the grid. And then during the day, it might produce too much, and it will feed back.
Right, right.
It nets out over a year, over the.
Yeah, okay. And that's something where you guys, well, Mr. Roth, or will he be owning those solar panels? Or is this a contract with a company?
I don't, I don't know.
You're not, that was just my question, just from my own experience sometimes with solar panels, I wasn't sure what the, and whether or not that over time, like as it builds, does that lower the rent or anything, or the utilities, things like that? Just curious question. Yeah. Okay.
I almost hear the guy chose his profession.
That it, Hannah?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Okay, other members of the board with questions? Okay, seeing none, we will now entertain questions from members of the public for the testimony given this evening by Mr. Shatlin. So again, please use the raise hand button. Zoom in our face. If you're on the phone, it's star nine. Last call, members of the public with questions for the architectural testimony just given this evening. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to thank Mr. Shatlin for his testimony, and I will move him from the panel back to participant.
Thank you.
It is 9:07, Mr. Roth, and we usually try to take a break at around nine o'clock during our meetings. I'm gonna, if it's okay with everyone, I'd like for us to take a five-minute break. And then we will resume with the public hearing. Mr. Roth, who's your next witness?
The engineer, Wayne Ingram. He's also got a couple of details in a new drawing in answer to your questions.
Excellent. So I see Mr. Ingram is in our attendee panel twice. He may be logged in twice, and I'll, we'll figure that out over the break. But if we can pause recording, and if you turn your camera off, just turn it back on so I know that you're back for the meeting. I have 9:07. Let's try to keep it to five minutes, 9:12. Okay, it looks like everyone is back, other than Jimmy Hill, so maybe Eileen, if you just want to note that so that we're not prolonged unnecessarily to continue. So Kara, we're good to move on to our next witness, right?
Yes, we are. I, again, just for the record, just note that we do not know at 9:16 as we begin and continue this hearing whether or not Jim is here. Jim, hopefully, we will be able to document when he does come back so that we can note the portion of the transcript that he needs to review in order to be able to vote on the application. And we can proceed.
All right, so I understand Mr. Ingram has got additional testimony.
Wayne, I guess I'm up. Wayne, you had questions that were raised about the turning radius and the use of a foot that we didn't technically own. So you did a new drawing to show that it was possible. So would you describe what the questions were you were faced with, the new drawings? You described the new drawings that you prepared to address those questions and describe them, if you will, so Kara can mark in her record.
So you've got eight twelve. I don't know if you're gonna share them, and then we'll give it a title and a date.
All right, can everyone see my? So this is, we submitted an updated plan set. The, just single sheet, I'll be referring to it, 51421.
Okay, entitled Site Distance and Turning Exhibit Five of Seven, so that is an updated page five of your seven drawings, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, shoot.
So essentially, you know, we prepared three updated insets in this sheet showing, you know, the various most difficult turning movements into the site. You know, the same ones essentially showed before, but with the change essentially being keeping the vehicle, you know, within the property line and not using that extra foot and change to the adjacent building, which is utilized by the, as part of the current parking lot. So I can just, you know, going, I'll go left to right on the sheet. This first exhibit again shows us going up to the property line. The vehicle would pull in, reverse, pull forward, reverse, and then pull into a parking stall. That's, it's probably a little bit of an over-conservative, you know, assessment of how that vehicle would turn in. It's, you know, certainly possible they could do it in one less set of movements. It's, it is showing one more set of movements than the prior drawing, which, you know, utilized the space up to the building. But the important point again there is that the vehicle can get into that parking stall with just a few turning movements in the space provided.
I hate to interrupt.
Shifting over to the center.
Sorry, just, just real, real fast, I hate to interrupt you, but just for the record, it's 9:19, and Mr. Hill is back in the meeting. I just want to make sure that the minutes get that.
Yeah, I actually noted him at 9:18.
Thank you.
And it was about just when Mr. Ingram started his testimony regarding the incident.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the second exhibit in the center shows a vehicle coming into and out of the carousel where the doorway is essentially in the center of the, of the structure. So this movement again shows that a vehicle can, you know, come out, forward, back, and then exit towards the street, which is again, the more restrictive of the, the two movements would be coming out in this scenario. Relatively simple turning there within the property lines of the site. And finally, on the right-hand side of the page, this would be a vehicle getting out of the handicap stall, which again, is the more restrictive of the two movements. So it'd be reverse out of the space, forward, reverse, and then forward, and that vehicle could exit the site. The question was asked, what's the distances with the current structures? And the answer to that is the parking carousel is 24 feet from the property line. The other stalls are 27 and change. And then again, they are 18-foot stripes, so even if we an extra two feet in the parking, we would have 25 feet a full, you know, drive area behind all these, you know, parts of the parking sides of an aisle. I believe that's, that's really all, you know, we were, you know, requested to, to report back on and change from our last testimony.
Thanks, Mr. Ingram. Bob Clerca.
Wayne, on the exhibit, excuse me, exhibit you just, you just presented the, the first, and this is presented the same way it's presented on sheet five. I'm not looking at your exhibit, I'm looking at sheet five. So I'm looking essentially at the same thing, correct?
It's the same plan, yeah. The exhibit is part of the plan set, yes.
All right. Your testimony, and I think the architect essentially says the same thing, that your parking structure is 20, you're saying 24 feet from the property line?
Correct.
Because the drawing on sheet five doesn't scale 20. Sheet five doesn't have that dimension listed, and it doesn't scale by 24 feet. It scales 24 feet.
I heard the question just asked prior, I opened up our CAD drawings. So, you know, from, from where the vehicle, you know, exits the, the parking, you know, you know, from where it pulls into and out of the parking stall, there is a 24-foot backup area, you know, behind that stall. And it's twenty, about a half for the, all the other vehicle stalls.
Shoot, and the 24 feet's to the property line or to the adjoining building?
To the property line. There's an additional foot in, and a little less than a half, I believe, from the property line to the building. So it was about 25 and a half to the full.
At some point, at some point, just check your drawing, because either it didn't print correctly, or it didn't print the scale, or it's not shown correctly. It doesn't, it doesn't scale that on, it doesn't dimension, doesn't include that dimension, and it doesn't.
We can add that, that's fine.
Yeah, just, just noted. As to the movements, so in the movements, so like the goalway on the, on the, for the one all the way to the left.
This was the first one?
Okay, it's in reverse. Yeah, so the parking space is on the right there. That's a total of how many movements to, for the handicap space? That's, that's coming out of the space, correct?
Three, there'll be, I believe, four movements to get out of the space.
Okay, and on the parking garage, that, that exhibit was showing, leading the garage, correct?
Correct. Coming or turn, because you're, you're coming in, you know, forward, you're able, you know, in a 24-foot wide aisle with the open door, you're able to just swing into the space. So we just chose, you know, the more, you know, to be more conservative, we chose the more difficult maneuver to identify.
So you're indicating if you provided an exhibit showing going in, it would just be a single turn into that nine-foot wide door?
Yeah, because essentially, yeah, I mean, yes, it's, it's basically just a single turn in. Again, we can, we can do this all day long with, you know, with different exhibits. Yep.
Your testimonies, you're doing the more conservative assessment here.
Yeah.
And how many movements is active to get out of that garage?
One, two, three, you back up, forward, back, and then you reverse forward, so I guess that would be a total of four.
Okay, and on the, the parking spaces, there you go.
Yep, so.
Going out.
Yeah, this one's coming in, because that's certainly more difficult of the two. Leaving this space as much, or, you know, they basically, again, you have 27 feet of backup, you're just turning the wheel, you back up, you pull single maneuver. In this case, be one, two, three, four, five maneuvers, looks like, to get into the space.
Okay, and you're, you've mentioned this several times, and the architects repeated it. You're saying that 24-foot is standard for a parking lot, which is correct, that's a correct statement. Typically, in a parking lot, you don't have to make four or five movements to get in and out of a space though, do you?
Well, you know, we have other, you know, instructions that, that make it more, which is why we didn't bother showing you the two spaces to the east of the parking deck. Those are single maneuvers, because the vehicle can simply turn straight into them. You know, the difficulty here is, you know, because you have, you know, the extensions and the overhangs of the structure in the front, you can't make your turn as soon as you would in those situations. That's why it's, it's a little more difficult. It's, it's kind of akin to, if you're putting, you know, turning into a parking area, that very first stall that you hit on your left is not one you typically can, you know, make a simple radius and pull into in a first shot, you know, because it's too close to you as you're making the turn. So you end up making a few maneuvers if you want to use that particular space.
And I'm not sure it shows on this exhibit, it shows on sheet five, but you're using a, how would you classify that vehicle? You're showing it as a 19-foot long vehicle?
Yeah, we just use a standard, you know, you know, passenger vehicle turning template.
Okay.
It was just, we used auto turn, it was listed as, you know, passenger car.
Correct, yeah. You had a detail of it on sheet five, I don't think you have the detail on your exhibit though.
Uh, yeah. Here in the corner. Yeah, a 19-foot wide. Here in the corner, yeah, a nineteen foot wide car are long, excuse me.
So back to the the turning movements, if you drop down to the bottom of that drawing. So essentially, you're saying the the two spaces just to the right of the parking structure, those two spaces are basically traditional spaces you could pull into and out of and basically one move as you could typically in in a parking lot.
Correct.
Okay, so of the thirteen spaces that are available here, the two two of them are somewhat conventional, the others have some degree of restriction, either pretty significant or relatively mild, either to get in into or out of. Is that a fair statement or?
I I would say, yeah, the the handicap stall and the first stall adjacent to the the building to the east are the most difficult. I think, you know, actually, I think the the carousel is probably a lot easier than it than it looks because we're, you know, we're basically getting to the edge of the structure before returning movements, but, you know, with the door in the center there and no obstructions on either end, you know, it is, you know, that vehicle can start making its turn sooner than we're we're demonstrating. But again, we're not, you know, we want to be conservative in this because we, you know, we don't, you know, want to have a problem. So I think I'm I'm probably overestimating the number of turns on that particular one, but, you know, that's that's kind of a worst case scenario. And again, it's the worst case scenario of, you know, the the building adjacent to us, you know, knocked down and all, you know, along the property line as opposed to, you know, costing us that foot and a half, which has been utilized back there for for decades.
But taking into consideration that foot and a half, there's a physical adjoining building there. It's not, it's not a stripe or a curb or something you can go over, it's it's a physical obstruction.
If, well, there's no obstruction now, it's paved up to that building, the additional foot and a half, and, you know, the owner's got, has, you know, his prescriptive use of it for, you know, for decades and, you know, again.
No, no, yeah, I'm I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, you're doing this to the property line because because it's property line and you wouldn't do it to the building in any event because that's a physical obstruction.
Correct, yeah, our prior exhibit showed us, you know, stopping the vehicle just short of the building. So obviously, we weren't hitting it, but we were using that extra foot and a half, so, you know, this is again, I I would say a very conservative approach of that property being redeveloped to the property line and we us not even having that backup ability of that foot and a half. You know, for all intents and purposes, you know, the the maneuvering is simpler than I'm showing here because they will go back, you know, not a foot and a half, but another foot, which, as I showed you previously in in the prior meeting, essentially, you know, seemed to eliminate, you know, one set of turns out of, you know, two, you know, the two most difficult spaces.
You're, you indicated you submitted a revised set of, a complete revised set of drawings, was this the only revision on the drawing? Because I noticed a few other things that were changed.
Oh, I I believe we did try and update some other things to just create some more continuity, you know, between plans as as was requested, you know, I don't, I don't know that any required any specific testimony, you know, we're really just trying to clarify things we discussed in the last meeting, you know, where certain areas were to be located, you know, things of that nature.
All right, well, if I indicated that you significantly reduced the amount of subsurface storage as part of the revised plan, I indicated that you, from what I could tell, unless I missed it, you don't have the heating elements details on this plan. And you, and this may just be an oversight, the parking garage structure you're showing on sheet six is a is a nine nine car facility and not an eight, it's it's different from what was shown on the and I'm assuming that what was shown on the prior that was shown on the prior plan by the other, the other ex, the other witnesses and whatnot was is what's is what's going to be installed here.
Yes, it's still the eight car apartment, not not the nine, that's just the the detail we we had previously, yes. And you are correct, we did, you know, reduce what was as the porous pavement area. It's still our intention, as we testified last time, to, you know, to meet the requirements in terms of what we need to store on the site and, you know, will be required to approve. So, you know, we're not changing our our response with regard to that, you know, just looking out to the to the adjacent building, you know, with that subsurface system and, you know, realistically, what we would really need to meet those requirements. You know, this is just a little bit more of a simplified design, but again, our our intention is to to comply with those requirements as as stated.
And can you just repeat for the, again, I'm not trying to push you into testifying on something you weren't prepared necessarily to testify to, but what what are what are the standards you were shooting for? Because I don't recall ever actually understand, I understood the the concept you were proposing, but I never understood or I never heard representation of what quantities or what standards you were trying to meet.
We're we're adding two hundred, not even, a hundred and forty two square feet of impervious surface to the site. You know, I think we we had back and forth last time about the requirement to provide, you know, stormwater management, meeting the borough's ordinance for, you know, for the exceedances that we were we were having here. And, you know, it was our intention to comply with those requirements. You know, certainly adding a hundred and forty square feet of impervious is, you know, something easily handled on the site. We just don't, you know, we don't have a final size on this because of the previous reasons stated as to, you know, not, you know, digging a soil log on these properties to to determine the depth of water and and how that, you know, how deep this can go, which dictates then how much area it needs to encompass.
All right, well, I'll respond to this and a bit prior to the next meeting, but the standard is actually not trying to to address the additional increase, the way the ordinance is written is, and you you fall into that standard that you your your choices are to either have twenty percent less impervious coverage than the ordinance would otherwise allow, and the site is already over what the ordinance would otherwise allow to deal with the difference, not with the just the additional two hundred, but with the difference between what if you would have cut this back to the the reduced impervious coverage, now, we can get into that later, what I'm indicating here, I don't think the volume of storage you're providing here is would meet the ordinance standard. But it it would have to be modified so that it so that it, in fact, you're not, you're not asking for any waivers or anything from the ordinance standard, correct?
At this point, we're not, no.
Okay. Okay, and the heated element, I'm sorry, is that, is it still part of this or not?
I don't believe we had removed that from the from the project, I did, I just think, we 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 had separate cut sheets and details that we had submitted previously as part of the prior discussions.
Okay, they're just not in this.
We just, we have an integrated plan, so I'm sorry, it get with the limited time we have sometimes between meetings, we don't always have the chance to integrate everything into the prior details will are still.
I understand that, I just wanted to get on the record, you, there's a revised set of drawings here, there's no intention to change that, it's just that it hasn't made it into the set of drawings yet, that's all.
Yes.
Okay, I think that was it.
Thanks, Beth, you've got your hand up, you've been patiently waiting. You're muted, though. Beth, you're muted.
Sorry, looking forward to in-person meetings. So, Mr. Ingram, as part of this plan said, did you account for the 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 space of the wall, the wall surrounding the parking structure, was that part of your plan revisions here?
Base of the wall, I mean, yes, we do, we do show, we're we're using the exterior thicknesses of the wall, yes.
Yeah, thank you, because so one of the things I've noticed is that the parking space closest to the front building is eight point two feet wide, and I'm sorry if I overlooked that detail previously, but it, but I I think it was due to accounting for the better accounting of the parking structure that's caused that reduced size space, do I have that correct?
Yes, and we've now designated that star, that stall, excuse me, as a as a compact car stall.
Okay, thank you, and so that's what I wanted to highlight for the board was that we've got one parking space that's down in size presumably from, I think, nine feet before and down to eight point two feet now. And is that the typical size for a compact parking space?
I have to check, I don't have the official designation of a compact stall. I would note too that we do have, you know, the adjacency of the paper walkway, which provides additional space, you know, the reason you have a nine foot stall is so that people can adequately open their doors to exit a vehicle, so they they will have the potential to do that in the space, even though the stall itself is is the eight point two foot width.
Okay. Um, okay, I just wanted to, I wanted to highlight that for the board, just because I see that is a further a further constraint on the available parking on the site, just that we've got a specific limitation on the on the type of car that's available for that particular spot. So I wanted to make sure that the board saw that, I would love to, just to get confirmation from from somebody that eight two is appropriate for a compact car space.
I just stood up and I'm seeing eight feet by sixteen feet is a compact stall. So we would be exceed and and slightly more than that in width.
And so it's, and I I think I can presume that there's that it would be inappropriate and perhaps not possible for an SUV to access or a larger car to access that that site. Because I think that that property had how many turning movements? I think it was already at five turning movements, is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, so, I mean, it is a nineteen foot, you know, vehicle that's used still in that, like, regardless of the fact that we're using it, you know, designated it as compact stall, it is still the the same nineteen foot long vehicle making, so, which is larger than a standard car is is fitting in that stall.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Thanks, Beth, Jay, did you have questions for Mr. Ingram?
I don't have any questions, I understood the testimony and just for the board's edification, what I do for the board is I take an old school large car vehicle turning template and I verify all of these movements independently. So I can just affirm that this exhibit is accurate based on my analysis of how many moves it's going to take to do all these maneuvers and the size of the car is correct. And everything works as Mr. Ingram testified, because like I said, I just wanted to double check with my large passenger car template, which is the specified standard that that it works as he as he is stating.
Okay, thanks, Jack, Kara, do you have anything else for Mr. Ingram?
I don't.
Okay, members of the board with questions for Mr. Ingram. Susan.
Say that and smile at the same time.
Well, because no one had a question and I thought, and I'm like, no, Susan always has a question.
When we're in person, I'm not going to be able to see you smirk, you know. I'll hear it, sorry, okay. Thank you, thank you so much for updating your plans to reflect the the surround, it makes a whole heck of a difference, obviously, it makes a a ten inch difference with the the one spot that's now a compact stall. Mr. Ingram, what I want to know is, and you may not recall this, for the original submission back in January, did you have to deal with the five foot addition that was put on that front building? Or was that five foot addition not there in the original design?
I honestly don't recall.
Yeah, I I don't recall either, and that's, I I guess my my question is, would have been, if you did recall, is would this design of this parking area be any different without that five foot proposed addition to the building? But I don't recall either, so I'll have to do a little research on that. The and Bob's comment was exactly on point, I really would like to see, this is one dimension that I'm always looking for, is that dimension from the back of the the north side of the the biggest parking structure to the property line. That dimension, I'd like to see clearly on your drawings, that would be very helpful. Let's see, the compact stall, I said. And finally, I don't know, this might be a question for Bob, we discussed previously with Mr. Ingram the permeable pavement, specifically that the permeable pavement requires regular maintenance. And if it is not maintained, then basically it affects, it doesn't go into the ground, but it actually gets dumped into the, eventually, down the driveway and into the public storm sewer system. So from what I recall of other applicants in years past that have proposed permeable pavement on their private property, we still required a maintenance agreement with the with the town to assure that the it is maintained properly and overflow, additional overflow doesn't run into the borough storm sewer. Is that something that the applicant is planning on doing? And I guess Bob is that, I I I have seen it done regularly on other jobs, but I don't know if if Bob has any comment on that.
Well, just, I'll answer it from a procedural standpoint, any stormwater management component on this site that that's being, for whatever reason that it's being proposed or installed, would have to conform to the the, you know, operation and maintenance requirements for that particular component. In this particular case, they're using an open grid, I forget what they call it, turf, something other.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, unit, and again, I'm going to offer some additional comments on this because that element of the project has changed somewhat.
Yeah, I recognize that.
So I'll offer some additional comments, but, you know, Wayne's testimony is the applicant's not looking for any relief under the ordinance. So whatever standard operating procedures, you know, if it's if it's a subsurface storage, if there's a DEP requirement between that and groundwater, they're going to have to document and field that in fact they've met that. And they're going to have to deal with the components of the regulations.
But I guess my question is, who deals with it after the C of O, how do, how are we how how are we guaranteed that they will maintain it? Because I I know clients of mine, as well as other applicants in the past, have had to enter some sort of maintenance agreement. So I guess my question to you is, are you familiar with that, is that something you would recommend in this situation or or what? And and because you're reanalizing it, because the size of the permeable pavement has shifted a bit, you, you know, I don't necessarily expect an answer now, but maybe you could address that with your rest of your response.
Susan, I would say that, you know, let's let's keep this for questions for Mr. Ingram, unless if he's got an answer, let him, I'm going to let him answer. And if it's for 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 Clerca, we can follow up on that when the board has our hears.
That's fine, that's fine. Mr. Ingram?
We're we're kind of an unfortunate, I mean, if the question I believe is with regard to the porous pavement and the the difficulty we, I mean, yes, I don't think we have an issue with agreeing to the maintenance requirements, you know, of the borough. I mean, I think that's important, we can certainly do that. You know, again, as I tried to state, our difficulty here is without the soil testing, we don't know the extent of the size of the system required. You know, if we have to increase the size, that we certainly have the capabilities to do so, you know, with additional area, so we're just taking our best guess at this point as to what would be required.
Understood, and that's fair enough, that's the the answer I'm looking for, thank you.
Susan, do you have any other questions?
No.
Other members of the board with questions for Mr. Ingram on the testimony given this evening. Jim, please.
Um, mine's more of a comment, and maybe I'm driving myself nuts on it. The graphic that you have for doing the parking seems to be showing all vehicles pointing out and yet you're doing, turning and pulling in, either that or we've got cars that have got rear steering on them. Which way are the vehicles pointing, it's?
A phase properly, you know, they'll be head on, you know, coming into the spaces, trying to back down that narrow driveway would, that would, that would be a challenge.
Well, that's, that that was my question, the graphics seem to show the vehicles going out.
We can turn them around.
It is just, I wanted to make sure I was looking at it correctly.
You are.
And also, I think the stormwater management requirements still require an ONM manual to be submitted to the municipality, if I remember correctly.
I believe so, and again, we would comply.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, other members of the board with questions for Mr. Ingram. Okay, members of the public, um, if you've got a question for Mr. Ingram on the testimony given this evening, uh, please use the raise hand button, uh, in Zoom or star nine if you're on a phone. Any members of the public with questions for Mr. Ingram on the testimony given this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to thank Mr. Ingram for, uh, his testimony this evening and I'm going to move him back down to attendee. Okay, um, I just, just, just for members of the public, I, I, I want to just say something here. Um, it's nine forty-eight. Um, we, we are going to continue with uh, the public hearing, uh, for ninety-one main, uh, Mr. Roth, I know at least there's one other witness that he's going to call that he already mentioned to speak about, uh, affordable housing. Um, it is the board's policy not to start new business past ten thirty. Um, and given the fact that we have a witness who I know will have testimony, questions from our professionals, board and, and uh, public, um, I'm, I'm guessing it is highly unlikely that in the next half hour or forty-ish minutes, um, we will complete that testimony with adequate time to move on to, um, the next item on the agenda, which is item number eight, um, Premier Outdoor Media. Um, I don't think we're going to have time to start that this evening. I, I just, I just don't, I've been being realistic here, um, in terms of expectation. Um, and so, uh, we will try if we get there before ten thirty, uh, to do so, but I think we may not. Um, and, and, and I'm, you know, we'll, and if we don't, um, we will simply carry it um, to a date in the future. Um, Cara, is there anything else you wanted to add there?
Uh, no, nothing else at this point. I don't know if, uh, council for, uh, premier has any thoughts if they want to stick around, if they don't want to stick around. Um, I don't want to speak for council. I do believe that they are not available for the June eighth meeting.
I see Jeffrey Hall's raising his hand. I'm going to let him talk, uh, real fast here. Uh, Mr. Hall. You can go unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, Jeffrey Hall for the applicant Premier Outdoor Media. Thank you for allowing me to speak this time. Um, obviously we were hoping to start this evening, but as I had, um, discussed with the board attorney, I have vacation plans on June eighth, which are longstanding. In fact, I haven't had a vacation in a long time. So, um, I've spoken to my client and he's graciously agreed that I should take my vacation. But what I would ask is that, uh, the board accept jurisdiction this evening and carry it to June twenty-second without further notice.
Cara, is that something we can do?
Mr. Chairman, as long as Eileen confirms on the record that all notices and publications and proofs have been provided and that there's no issue, uh, we can certainly announce to the public that this matter will be carried to the twenty-second meeting of the board, uh, without further notice. Um.
Well, let's, let's, let's not take it out of order on the agenda. We'll do that when we get there, but uh, we'll, we'll make that announcement when we get there, but Eileen, you, you, you can confirm that we're good otherwise.
Yes, all the mailing receipts, um, match the certified list that were provided, um, by both Raritan Township and the Borough of Flemington. I defer to Cara of, obviously for the content of the notice, but all of the mailing receipts do, um, to match up.
Okay, so Mr. Roth, I think we'll be able to do that when we get, regardless of what time it is, um, we will absolutely do that this evening. Um, we just will carry and not have any of the public here.
Are we, which meeting are we carrying then?
The twenty-second of June.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great. I appreciate your understanding. Thank you.
Thank you for taking me out of turn.
All right. Um, so Mr. Roth, um, who is the, uh, the, the, the next witness that you're calling? You're muted, I'm sorry. Mr. Roth, you're muted.
Art Bernard is our next.
Art Bernard, yes, okay. Okay, Art Bernard has been promoted to panelist. Um, if they could turn on their camera and unmute themselves, uh, we do need to swear them in and, uh, qualify them um, before we can proceed with other testimony.
Hi, Art. Hi, Art. If you could raise, if you could raise your right hand for the board. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great.
And you could hear me. Great. That's even better. Good. Art, tell us, uh, who you are and what you do for a living. Well, I, I'm a, uh, I'm a managing member of my own firm. Uh, I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner with over forty-five years of experience in land use planning and affordable housing. For eight and a half of those years, I served the New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing, leaving as its executive director in, in nineteen ninety-four. And in my capacity at the Council on Affordable Housing, I developed and supervised COA's entire work program and wrote all of the first and second round of affordable housing regulations for the state of New Jersey. Unfortunately, they turned out to be the only regulations that the court didn't substantially overturn. They still are intact. They still are in use. And they are the basis of your housing element and fair share plan and your settlement with Fair Share Housing Center. And when you say you are, you mean the Borough of Flemington? Yes, I meant the Borough of Flemington, yes. And, um.
I'm sorry, but I, I think we can, we can pause here. Um, Beth, we have any objection to qualifying, uh, as an expert in planning?
No, not at all.
Okay, um.
Just really quickly, Mr. Cameron, I just want to understand, um, I, I, I think you, I know you said, Art, you are a licensed planner, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, Lee, you're asking to have him qualified, um, as a planner. Is there any, any other area that you're speaking?
As a planner and as an expert on, uh, COA and the regulations, uh, et cetera.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave that up to you.
That, well, you know, planner is fine. I mean, COA is COA. It's all part of planning, so it's all good. Um, and, and for, for the clarification, uh, you know, AICP is a national, it's not just New Jersey. Um, if he's, just if you're a PP, you have to take the extra test for New Jersey, so.
Um, and just if I may ask, Art, a couple of other questions. Art, uh, have you qualified as an expert witness in, uh, other vicinages in the state? Yeah, I, I've qualified as an expert witness all over the state before local boards and, uh, in front of the courts and I was, uh, I guess most recently, well, I was, I qualified as an expert witness in the Middlesex County and Mercer County Fair Share Trials along with, who knows, numerous declaratory judgment actions since two thousand fifteen all over the state.
I don't think we have any objection to qual- his qualifications as an expert.
I just wanted to get them on the record, Mr. Chairman, and, and, uh, so the, the last, uh, question, uh, in that regard, uh, has you been, have you been a special master in relation to COA regulations? Yes, in seven different municipalities, yes. In preparation for tonight and your, uh, I gather he's accepted as an expert.
Without objection.
Good. Uh, prior to, uh, your testifying tonight and accepting, uh, this assignment, uh, what have, uh, you reviewed? Would you identify any documents, reports in preparation for your participation this evening? Yeah, I, I, I reviewed the state affordable housing regulations and I reviewed, um, uh, a lot of documents that, uh, your planner Beth McManus was kind enough to send me, including your, uh, settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and your housing element, uh, her report, of course, and, uh, the, the borough's overlay inclusionary ordinance, and, and that's where I'd like to pick up tonight. Um, because I, I, you know, I, we began reviewing it with something in mind and found something quite different in mind. And I, I, I had a discussion, a couple of discussions on this with Beth over the last week and into this afternoon. And I'm going to summarize my findings. Um, and I welcome Beth's, um, uh, conclusions, even if they don't agree with mine, because I think that would be helpful to the board. When, um, I, I, I wish I, I could have the ordinance up in front of the board. I'm going to have to read some of it to you. It, it, uh, it's not a lot of reading. Um, I think Beth has it in front of her and, and she can corroborate what I'm saying. You, the ordinance is twenty-six thirty-five and, um, there are various paragraphs to it. And the first paragraph deal talks about, uh, developments in excess of six units per acre. And the, uh, second paragraph, paragraph B, talks about developments of five or more units. And I only reference, talk about those developments because paragraph C starts talking about for any such development. And that's what they're talking about. And it says for any such development for which the borough's land use ordinances already permitted residential development as of the effective date of the ordinance, which is August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. This requirement, and I'm assuming it means the affordable housing requirement shall only apply if the borough permits an increase in the gross residential density to at least twice the permitted approvable, uh, gross residential density as of the effective date of this ordinance. Now, I don't know if you could follow that, but it's basically saying that if residential development was already permitted on the site as of, uh, August two thousand seventeen, in order for this ordinance to even apply, uh, uh, there has to be an approval that would double the density. And my understanding from talking to the client, I haven't done my own independent analysis, is that the units that are being proposed on the, on the floors above the first floor were permitted, and that's six units. There were six units permitted by the ordinance as of August two thousand seventeen. And what's being proposed here, if you approve it, would be nine units. That would be three more units or an increase of fifty percent, not the hundred percent that would kick in the ordinance. So my conclusion, and I, I relayed this to Beth, uh, uh, I guess Thursday and again today, um, was, um, I, I don't think the development has an affordable housing obligation. And I guess I just stopped there. And then stopping there, I guess I was figuring that Beth would respond.
If somebody else was going to jump in. Beth, please. So, uh, yes, I, I've spoken with, uh, Mr. Bernard, uh, a couple of times in the last week about the ordinance. And he's correctly cited the, the, uh, the ordinance. This is your, um, your inclusionary set aside or your mandatory set aside ordinance that's intended to capture affordable housing for any opportunities that might arise. That, that frankly, we didn't know about at the time of our housing plan, uh, back in twenty seventeen or so. And so what this section that he cited says is where essentially where the density has been doubled beyond that which is permitted, the, uh, the gross permitted density, the affordable housing set aside gets triggered. And so, uh, what we have here is sort of a unique situation in the sense that we're, we have a property in the DB district and the DB district does permit residential development. Yes, we have the, the use variance for residential, but that's just, that's simply because of, uh, a unit which is proposed on the, on the first floor, or units which are proposed on the first floor. Um, but what we don't have is a gross density to, uh, to compare to. So we don't have an existing density of say X units an acre compared to the, uh, the proposed density of, of Y units an acre. And so as I, uh, as I read this and speak with Mr. Bernard, I, you know, I, I think, I think there's a very good argument to be made that the ordinance indeed is not triggered because we don't have a specific density, uh, that has been, that has been doubled here. Um, but that said, I, I do just want to, uh, offer some comments in terms of, uh, more generally about the need for affordable housing in, in this particular application. So while your inclusionary zoning set aside ordinance may not be triggered because we don't have that, uh, that specific density to measure against. Um, I do think that a location for, of, uh, for affordable housing at this particular site is particularly well-suited in the sense that we've, that we have additional density that's being added to your downtown to the location that's, uh, that is perhaps most closely, uh, accessible to jobs and services offered in Flemington. Um, and also I, I think that the provision of affordable housing is something that the board ought to keep in mind. Uh, the potential provision of affordable housing is something that the board ought to keep in mind as it considers the benefits, potential benefits of this application for the borough.
Can I ask a question? And I don't know if it's for Mr. Bernard or for Beth, um, the calculation for this doubling of density, right? Right now, there is an existing parcel that has two principal structures, all of which is a conforming use for commercial. Right? I mean, that's, that's, that, that, there is zero housing on site right now. And does not, the increase change that, you know, in terms of base to compare it to? Just because the second and third floor, it's permitted to there be housing, there is no housing on this site right now. And just because it could have been put on there, uh, it doesn't mean, the rear building as it exists right now only has a, is only a two-story structure, right? Or two and a half story structure, um, which would mean that even if you could theoretically say, all right, there's permitted housing on units on the second story of this building, but there is no third story to this building. That's proposed new construction. So I'm, I'm confused as to how we don't have a comparison to trigger the density. Maybe Beth, you can explain our ordinance a little bit.
Yeah, the, the ordinance is, I said, this is an ordinance that applies borough wide. It's not specific to the DB district. But when, but it starts to, the implementation of it or the interpretation of it becomes more difficult in a, in a zone like this, which does not have a specific residential density. Instead, the density in the DB district is intended to be governed by other controls. You know, how many units it can be accommodated within a building, within the maximum height, within the setbacks, given the maximum permitted impervious coverage, given the maximum, uh, available parking on the property. And so that's, that's how the DB district, uh, as of right now intends to, to regulate density. If this were a more, uh, a more typical zone where we permitted residential uses at say five units an acre, uh, and the applicant was proposing twelve units an acre, it would be a very simple interpretation that the density has gone from five to twelve and therefore the, uh, the ordinance is triggered. But here, uh, it's, the interpretation is obviously a bit different. I think it's not, but to your point, uh, I think it's not so much what exists on the property uh, that should be compared to that which is proposed, but rather what would be, you know, is the ordinance applicable with the density standard in place as it references, you know, um, essentially doubling the permitted density. Um, or alternatively, what is the potential number of units that can be accommodated on the site that, uh, that potentially could be used as a proxy or the, the density limitation?
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I give this a shot?
Please.
I've spent more time looking at this ordinance than I think a lot of people have. The ordinance isn't structured of what was there. It's what's permitted by the ordinance. And again, in discussing this with my client, I'm told that the, the, that the apartments that are proposed above the first floor are permitted. Now, in my discussion with, uh, Beth this afternoon, she said, I don't know if I agree with, this is what I heard this afternoon. I don't know if I agree with you or not, but I will tell you that this is a D variance and I think uh, you should be providing one affordable unit. And I discussed that with my client and my client has agreed to do it. And I wanted to go this way. Read what, if I may interrupt.
We've agreed, what, if I may interrupt, we've agreed to do that. What I would prefer is if we are to do that, it'd be one of the one bedrooms and it'd be moderate rather than low. Because this is an expensive project in the effort to get to the zero in the energy end of it. We'd have no problem and, and welcome doing our share by providing a moderate income one bedroom. Would we do more? I suppose it's possible, but I think a project of this size, of this design, of, of this quality and being allowed to use the back end of the front building for residential, which I think is needed in the market. I would hope and propose, and I haven't discussed this with Art, although we've discussed the concept of providing a unit. We obviously would prefer to commit a one-bedroom, moderate income.
Just for the boards, just for some context for the board members. When we talk about the income and the bedrooms of an affordable unit, it's really important because not all affordable units are eligible for, well, some of, some affordable units are received better than others. Let me put it that way. From a compliance standpoint, where we have one affordable unit in a project, it's intended to be a low-income unit and that's because the rules require not less than 50% of, of affordable units in a project to be low-income. And that's why where there's one unit, I would typically request a low-income unit. And similarly, for the bedroom distribution, there is a maximum of 20% one-bedroom units. And so obviously where we have one, one affordable unit providing is a one-bedroom unit is going to exceed that 20%. And so I would typically look for a two-bedroom or perhaps a three-bedroom unit in this development, if the route to be one unit provided, I, I think we could live with, I could live with in terms of a compliance perspective, a two-bedroom unit.
At a moderate, or you want it low?
Low-income two bedrooms, please.
Well, before, before we negotiate in real time, um, Mr. Roth, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, that's possible, but it's awfully tight.
I know that this is, affordable housing is a really complicated issue. And so I, I just want to make myself available if the board has any questions about your compliance plan.
If I could, if I could ask Beth, could you, for the members of the public and the members of the board who might know, can you say in Hunter County in Flemington Borough, what is the area of median income that qualifies as low income and moderate income? And what would the rent paid be for low and moderate? You know, using a 30% of income kind of number?
Or give me one.
I have that, I have that information.
Oh, you have it at your fingertips. Go ahead.
I do have it. Well, the let me, let me do it by person, different. Let me give you like a one-person, two-person, a three-person household. And, and so the upper income for a one-person household for moderate in Hunter and in, in the region is $68,992. Then low income, the upper income limit would be $43,120. I'm going to stop there because we're not talking about very low in this discussion. A two-person household, the upper income for moderate is $78,848. And the upper income for low is $49,280. And a four-person household would earn as much as $98,560 to be moderate. And the upper income for low is $61,000. Now, the, the pricing of the units is based on, well, a, a one-bedroom unit. A one-bedroom moderate income unit would be priced at $1,286. Now that, that assumes, that assumes that the tenant is paying the bulk of its utilities himself. The, the gas, the water, the heat, air conditioning, they're paying that themselves. The, the a two-bedroom low that Ms. McManus was talking about could, and I'm paying that at 40% of median income because that's the way it's normally done, would rent for about the same amount of money, $1,225. Larger unit for basically the same money. Is that, is that helpful?
It, it is. And I'm saying you're using a 40% stat number, right? Is that what I heard? It broke up.
I'm using all the state regulations, but it assumes that no household, no lower moderate income household is paying more than 30% of their income on rent and utilities.
Right. That, that, I, I think it helps put it into context as to, given the relative affluence of the area, how, what, what that bar is in terms of, of qualifying for low and moderate housing in, in Flemington.
Now, I would note, I, I would note that, that land and labor and things like that seem to even themselves out around the state, even if the, the income levels are high. Mr. Chairman and Board, I, I realized that we have to come back. And I realized that the, that the applicant has asked for one moderate income unit and, and Ms. McManus is asking for one low-income unit, which I assume would be at 49% of median income. Perhaps it'd be helpful for us to resolve this when we come back next month.
That, that's fine. And, and I, I'm, I'm okay with us. If, if, if that's the, Mr. Roth, if that's okay with you, we can kind of suspend Ms. Bernard's testimony here, come back with additional testimony and then have time for questions. You know, in toto, from that additional testimony, if that, if that's okay.
That, that's okay with me, Mr. Chairman. The one factor that I consider that I want you to be aware of is when you do a project that is intending to be zero, you're in terms of energy and with the very efficient energy-using appliances and units. I haven't thought through or tried to figure out how you build in the savings in energy costs when I understand and I've never been involved. I've, I've only been involved as the lawyer. I haven't been involved as the owner in some of the bigger projects that I was involved in in Raritan Township, where we did have low and moderate units, but those were not offering a considerable savings in terms of the energy bill. So how that gets factored in is something I'll have to talk to Art and apparently Mrs. McManus, Ms. McManus about.
Sure, that, that, that makes sense. So I, I'd like for us to pause here. I know Susan, you've got a question, but if we can, can, if we can, if you can hold it and we'll do all the questions later.
It's a question for Beth, actually.
Okay, good.
Can, can Beth, when, because we're coming back in a few weeks to discuss this, could you just be prepared to answer questions about our borough's history on 2635 and that August 2017 comment that Mr. Bernard made? I remember when we put that ordinance together and I, I just, I need to be refreshed on that.
Yeah.
Might be prepared the next time.
Sure.
Okay. So, so then what I'm going to say then is we will come back and continue Mr. Bernard's testimony at, at, at a subsequent hearing, we'll be able to have some more answers here and some more details. I think that'll be to everyone's benefit to have that information then. Mr. Roth, are there other witnesses that you intended to call this evening?
No.
Okay. So then what I'm going to say at this point is we are going to continue this application, the here, the public hearing for this application, 2020-03, to our next meeting, June 8th, 7:00 PM. No further notice will be given and at which point we will also care, have some discussion and resolution of this potential conflict question, correct?
That's correct. And also we will need an extension of time to act. At the last meeting, we extended the time period to the end of May. I, I think it makes sense to extend this to the end of June. Lee, if you're okay, we could do that on the record with a follow-up in writing?
Well, let, let's extend it to the middle of June. So we don't, so if we have to extend it again, we'll address it again.
Okay. So then give me a date, middle of June, which would be when?
Middle of June. But, but let's make it the 22nd. That's your second meeting in June, if it had to. Hopefully it will not go that far.
Okay. So it'll be extended to June 22nd and you'll get Eileen something in writing confirming that.
I'll say it right here on the record and so she's got it, I would think.
Kara, would you like something in writing as well?
Ali, just so we have something in writing for the file itself, that would be great. An email would be fine.
Email will do. I'll send.
That'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are, are you available? I have.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's already on my calendar.
Very good.
All right. Thank you both. I'm going to move you from panelist to attendee.
Oh, and really quickly, just for the record, again, everyone that testified tonight on this application will be here at the June 8th meeting.
I've moved them off, but I think that that's what, that's what had been presented. Okay. So we're going to move on to item eight. Is, I want to look and see if council for, I do not see council for Premier Outdoor Media. I think they've left and that's okay.
He left, Jeff, yeah.
That's, that's fine. Again, so just since we're at this point in the agenda to make it official, we are going to carry item eight on the agenda, application 2020-01 Premier Outdoor Media Block 49 Lot to, to June 22nd at 7:00 PM. No further notice will be given. Okay?
Correct.
All right. We are on item nine of the agenda, chair items. I, I know the mayor mentioned it before, but I'm going to reiterate it here for everyone's benefit. We are going to be back in person sooner than later. Okay. Let me just be very clear. If you don't have a vaccine, go get a vaccine. Okay. Because the, the, the state is not going to enforce distancing or masking. So I love you all. Go get a shot. Okay? And if, and they're widely available. So, so, so please just go get a shot. I do not know the configuration of Borough Hall. It may or may not look like it did when we were back in person before because of however we need to set things up. I will tell you that planning board is far more complicated than Borough Council. Planning board can continue to stream with a single fixed point camera and provide access to individuals. We need, in my mind, either a camera operator or perhaps three cameras. Because in addition to the members of the board, we have our witnesses, which oftentimes sit at a table, not up on the dais. We also have witnesses providing testimony. So it's complicated. We are going, my goal is to ensure as best we can the level of digital access that we have come to expect. And the public deserves to have that access continuing moving forward, which means we're going to continue digital submissions. People are going to bring their iPads to meetings. We are going to use all of those tools. I will do everything we can to ensure, I can't promise anything yet, but I'm going to, we're going to do everything we can to ensure that members of the public who are unable to physically be present in Borough Hall will continue to have as much access as we could possibly give to the proceedings of the planning board, which would include in my mind, the ability to ask questions in real time of witnesses providing testimony. Not just being able to watch a stream, but I would really love to have that additional layer of, of, of interactivity. I don't know if we're going to get there. Kara's going to look in to see what DCA is going to require of us. I don't know when that, I don't know when we're going to make that switch. I know the mayor had said something about June 22nd. I, I'm not promising dates because we have applications that are in process and we are going to try to provide continuity as best we can for those. But if nothing else, go get your vaccination if you don't have it. Just, just leave it at that. That's, that's item number one that I've got. Item number two that I've got is the June 22nd meeting, and I'm just going to say this out loud. Mark, Susan and I all have a kid graduating at 100 and Central that day. I have no idea what, neither does 100 and Central have any idea what they're doing, if anything, for in-person graduation that day, although they're talking about it. I'm, I'm just saying that it'll be a weird day. I'm not going to leave us three board members short, but I'm just saying that there is something else going on that day in town. So just to, just to let everybody know about that. As folks are planning summer, I'm not going to say travel, but whatever you're doing over the summer, please make sure that you let us know if you can, or you know, if you're not able to attend a meeting so that we can guarantee quorum for things moving forward. And finally, I'd like for us to jump into the master plan work as we get into the summer months. That is, that needs to happen. I am eagerly, Robin is still on the line. Robin, I am eagerly waiting the final report from our multi-organizational, multi-funded study that was referenced before, so that we've got the stuff we need to do the master plan work. I'm not going to wait on this. I really want this to move, to move forward and over the summer months. So that is, that is my goal for, for us to continue that work and to not let it get stalled out yet again. Susan, did you have anything else?
Well, I just wanted to ask, I know you're attending a meeting with the mayor regarding the, you know, moving to in-person. And I, I agree with you about the, you know, trying to also keep the, the good stuff about technology that we've learned over the last year. Could you get clarification as to board members participating remotely during that meeting? If you could bring that up, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. So I'm going to find out the, you mean, you mean board members to be at this, this, this reopen meeting? Or you mean board members participating remotely if need be?
The, the, the latter. Yeah. Because I, I would think that, I mean, I know that the council, I mean, in years past, had people calling in and voting on issues. And so I don't see why we couldn't continue this.
Well, let me, let me be very clear.
But I don't know.
Some of this is not our control and this is where Kara is going to find out what DCA is going to.
Well, that was my next comment.
Don't forget what we're doing here. Do what we're doing here with a Zoom meeting is only because the DCA has granted us under the emergency orders to do this. And the governor's made it clear that he is intending not to re-up the emergency order next go around next month, hoping to have a legislative solution worked out in Trenton. And what that means, I have no idea yet. So we, we're going to have to follow the regs.
Right. And that was one of me, my next question is Kara, I, I would need you to kind of involve in that as well.
Absolutely. And what I can tell you is that the discussions up until this point have been that there, there doesn't seem to be an objection to continuing a online presence and participation, provided that there is also an in-person. The only caveat being that everything needs to be optional. So for instance, by way of example, you cannot establish a system where the board and the applicant and the professionals are the only ones allowed in person and every member of the public is online. That is not going to be an option. It may very well be an option that you have an in-person and an online option and anyone can join either. But restricting in-person to certain people and restricting online to certain people, that's not something that's going to fly, but I will certainly get whatever additional information there is. There's a number of different sources and I've been discussing it with some individuals as well. There's a number of different sources, and I've been discussing it with some individuals as well. I'll also provide the board with some thoughts that some of my other boards have had, because everyone's dealing with this in their own way, so I'll fill you in.
Jim, did you have a question?
Uh, no, not a question. I was gonna say, I've been to one of the meetings you're talking about right now, and it can work for the combination of professionals are there to give testimony. And you'll have board members that are still virtual. You'll have joiners that are still, you know, on virtual. And you'll have joiners in the audience. Works.
Yeah, so what we're gonna, I'm gonna try. I mean, my, my goal is to, my goal is to have as great a level of participation as possible by as broad of mem- as members of the public as possible. That's what I'm going for here. And so the digital piece, if we can do it, I want us to, to really get it as, as best we can.
Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to comment on was your comment on the master plan, and that is while we are all anxiously waiting the report for the opportunity zone funding report, that's not the only thing we need to move forward on master plan. We can do other things, you know, to get started.
You're absolutely right, and we need to get the, I need to get money. So that's the other piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. Brian, were you gonna jump in?
Just a quick question while we're talking about reopening plans. Is there also consideration given to using the courthouse in case we have larger applications where we, larger public turnout is expected?
Well, again, that's, I think that's, that's an always question in terms of the ability to rent the courthouse. I do not know if the county commissioners have had any, they've been, they've been meeting in person. You know, they've been having in-person meetings in the courthouse rather than in their normal meeting space with some, with a limited number of in-person folks and then an online piece. That's how the county commissioners have been meeting. So I think it's an option, but it, there, obviously, anytime we do that, there, it comes at a cost. And so we just wanna, we wanna use that when we have to, but we wanna think about Borough Hall as best we can.
The cost is to the applicant, correct? At least that's what, they never charged us until the last, like, two years, and then all of a sudden they started charging us.
I know, and I'm not sure, I don't know what the what is there, and I'm, I'll dig into that.
Yeah.
But, but my preference is to not, you know, not, not make the courthouse a regular thing. Let me, let me just put it that way, and it'd be the rare exception. If it, if used at all. Just we'll leave it at that. Any other, and Eileen, so the next meeting on June 8th, we've got the continuation here for Lee Roth. What else do we, what else do we have on the eighth?
Just the resolution for the extension of the spice factory approvals. And I did reach out to the applicant's attorney for Enzo Padabani. They are still waiting. They might be changing their engineer, so they did give us an extension to the end of June, so.
So we don't have a date yet for, for that? Okay, and they have not noticed yet?
No.
Okay, all right. So if Mister Grimberg needs to push it into July, that's fine. We'll just need him to confirm extension timeline. Okay?
And then on the 22nd, the continuation of the, or, well, we continue the Premier Outdoor Media.
Okay, excellent. I think that's it. Yes, do I have a motion to audit the bills?
So move.
Move Hane.
I got Giffen moved and Hane second. Sorry. Uh, any discussion?
Either will.
Uh, Eileen, you call her all, please?
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mister Hane?
Yes.
Mister Campion?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mister Cook?
He said mouth gas. I just didn't quite hear it.
Mister Budney?
Yes.
Mister Hill?
Yes.
Mister Norton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kara, do we have an attorney's report?
Uh, not tonight.
Mister Clerico?
No, nothing tonight.
Ms. McManus?
Not tonight.
Mister Troutman?
No report.
Do we need to go to executive session?
Do not.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Engelhardt moves to adjourn.
Budney second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.